Everything should be working.
Very good. I'll call to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council for our work session. And I'll start by asking councilors to review the agenda and items on consent. Any comments? Okay. And one of our councilors is going to be here a little bit later, or two of them, have a scheduled conflict for the first part of the meeting. Any councillor concerns? Okay, we'll start with our first item, which is the wastewater treatment plant master plan update.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. I'm here to provide an update of our wastewater treatment plant master plan and bring up our presentation here. I also have Dave Price from Corolla Engineers joining us, and I'll be calling on him to provide some more of the technical information in this presentation. So it was roughly a year ago-
I just wanted to ask if that mic is on.
Maybe I'm just not close enough to it. Is that better? Oh, let me, okay. Sorry, I have to, forgot to share the screen here. Okay. So I think it was about a year ago we last gave an update, and so there've been some significant changes in this planning effort since then. And those include updated population growth projections and a change to the service area boundary. And we also looked at our existing permitted industrial dischargers and how much more they would be allowed to discharge under their current permit limits and how that would affect the ultimate amount of wastewater being received at the plant. Then we did a little more in-depth seismic resilience analysis, looking primarily at subsurface conditions on some of the existing structures and some improvements that would be needed there. And then because the wastewater flows and loads are increased, the projections are higher now than the existing capacity of the plant, we did some detailed hydraulic modeling of the processes at the plant to figure out what kinds of upgrades would be needed to handle that additional flow. And from that, we updated our capital project list and schedule. So on the planning projections for the population growth, the blue curve here pretty well follows the estimates in the collection system master plan as well as our water system master plan and other planning that's been done. And so that's roughly about a 2.9% annual growth rate. And you'll see here, it just, it breaks off towards the end of the planning period. It goes a little bit lower, and that's because the Salt Creek concept plan was completed in 2018, and so we looked more closely at that boundary. And basically, that means the farthest north area of the, well, what had been the service area in those earlier documents is projected to be served by the city of Tuolatin in the future, so those numbers do come down just a little bit. But overall, the rate of growth we're looking at is much higher than we had looked at before, just in line with our other planning documents. So you can see here, we're looking at a build-out population of roughly 50,000, which is about double what we are at right now. And as a result of that, this table kind of summarizes the last year on record of annual flows and loads compared to the current capacity of the treatment plant, and then what's projected in the build-out year. And so from the present until the build-out condition, you can see that most of these numbers are roughly doubling, and pretty much every one of them exceeds the current capacity of the treatment plant. And the challenge we face in accommodating this additional flows and loads at the plant is we have very limited space to grow. The plant is kind of down in a depression. It had been an old gravel pit, and you can see all the pretty steep slopes surrounding the plant, as well as, you know, we have residential development to the north, we have ODOT property to the east, and then the west and south are parklands. So we don't have much geographic space to build a lot of new structures. And so that has required us to look at intensified treatment processes. And our next slide here kind of goes over some of those, the options that we looked at, and I'm going to ask Dave to kind of run through some of the details of what we looked at for these options.
Sure, thanks, Mike. Good evening, everybody. These options here should be familiar. I believe that we presented our alternatives to the council previously, but at these more aggressive growth rates that Mike mentioned and the higher build-out populations, it becomes more critical to the city for the reasons that Mike showed on one of the preceding slides where you can see that the design capacity of the plant exceeded, and given those site constraints, one of the major considerations for us in helping you all plan what you should be doing out at the wastewater treatment plant site is, you know, how can we, in the space that's available, intensify the treatment that's happening there and provide reliable treatment in the future that also allows you some flexibility in the, you know, with, for the potential, you know, at some point, regulations on the discharge maybe become more strict. The three options that we looked at were membranes. A membrane bioreactor is term you'll hear us use. There's a biomag process, which is a process that is used with high rate, like high-flow, high-rate kind of situations. And then IFAS, which is another, it's an attached growth process. Both of those processes there in the green are intensifications that would rely on primarily the facilities that you have out there, the tankage with modifications to the tanks and the introduction of some additional elements that would be placed in those tanks, and then appurtenances that would need to be included to make that work. All of them are space efficient. One of the important things that we need to point out when we look at this slide are the challenges. And under the biomag and IFAS options, at the projected 2045 flow and loads, they really don't provide reliable capacity under those conditions. There are some additional complications with, at least a couple of these options, and you can see those challenges that are identified there. What we like about the membrane process is it's one that's been implemented all over the place, all over the country, in the Northwest. It is space efficient. It is going to produce a high-quality effluent- It is going to produce a high-quality effluent. And with the tankage that we know that you have out there and some additional tankage that's proposed, we believe that it's going to be the most reliable in terms of delivering on your compliance requirements in the future, with some opportunity for you to have the flexibility to meet some higher or more stringent discharge requirements. There are some costs that come with that, higher-quality effluent and that space efficiency, and you can see those under the challenges there, where we're talking about the cost of the facility. We're going to need to bring in some more fine screens, and the O&amp;M for a facility like this is going to be higher than certainly the facility that you have out there now, and most likely higher than the two options that we looked at. Is there anything else we want to point out, Mike?
No, unless, you know, if anyone wants to ask questions while we're talking, of course, welcome to, or we can continue on.
I do have a question on this. Not that I'm pretending to be a bioengineer or something like that, but on the membrane option, which is the recommended option, can you talk about the benefits of the higher aeration rate that that gives to the process for the long-term operation?
Well, I think that's listed under the challenge here, and that's just-
I mean, under the challenge, like what are, highest aeration rate, what does that mean as a challenge?
I think it means we're going to need the most number of blowers, right, Dave?
Right. It means you're going to need the most blower equipment, and that goes hand-in-hand with the costs on the O&amp;M side, but also the capital cost.
And then on page 25, well, it does say that our existing lower system capacity will be deficient by 2027. So I guess talk about how, you know, how the benefits of that option outweigh the need for the extra machinery.
Well, I think in any case, whichever option we use, that remains true. We're going to have to add a blower and an aeration basin in the short term, and that, you know, we talked about that later on in the presentation as one of the short-term improvements. But I think essentially, if I understand, Dave, the MBR process is the only one that we can be confident will provide the capacity at the flows and loads we're projecting at the end of the planning period.
That's right. That's what we concluded in. What we're doing, just so everyone understands, what we're proposing to do is maintain the conventional nature of what you have out there, which is less cost to operate as long as possible. And that means that you're going to be keeping some of the facilities that you have out there online and operational, including things like clarifiers and cloth filters, which, at the ultimate build-out of what we're showing in the master plan at 2045, those facilities would no longer be necessary. And by the time you get to that point, those facilities on their own or working in tandem with the membrane facility wouldn't necessarily be sufficient to meet your requirements.
So just, you know, jumping ahead a slide here, I think this might help kind of put things in context. The number three here, that's the aeration basin that's proposed in the very short term, just because, you know, our secondary capacity is going to be at its limits, as well as an added blower to go along with that. That's number two here. And so we would increase the conventional treatment capacity while we can in the near term, before we begin to build the membrane facility, which is number 11 here. And then, as Dave mentioned, even when we start building this membrane facility, which would be phased in over time, for the, up until, I believe, near the end of the planning period, we'd continue to use the conventional secondary processes to the maximum extent possible, which have lower operations costs. And it's not until the very end where we would essentially divert all flow through the membrane facility. Is that correct, Dave?
That's right.
Question for you, then. If you're talking about five, six, and seven, and you're going to decommission those at some point in the future?
Not seven. That's the dissection, correct.
Five and six, you'll be decommissioning five and six at some point in the future, correct? I thought I heard you were going to divert everything over to the membrane.
Dave, you'll have to answer that one. I don't recall if we're going to continue using five and six at the last stage.
That's correct. At the last stage, those would become, they're not adding any value at the last stage.
Okay, so they would be decommissioned?
Yes.
So, question for you. I really keyed in on the fact that you have geographic constraints. And, you know, given that first map that you showed, it's pretty much landlocked. I'm wondering, given the fact that, you know, even though you're projecting out, you know, 2040 and beyond, what would be, what would be the potential risk that we would carry with any of these, given the fact that our population continues to grow? I mean, are we talking end-of-life of 2050, 2060? You've already said that population growth has exceeded what was originally projected. And if we continue to see, you know, exceptional growth in this community and the use of the wastewater treatment plant, could we find that we're running out of time much more quickly? Going back to my question about five and six, if you're going to eventually decommission those, can that space, in a very landlocked space, be repurposed for something else, or is that considered contaminated soil that can never be repurposed?
Well, if I understand your question, you're asking if flows and loads go even higher than we're anticipating at 2045, I think, Dave, the final phase of the membrane project does provide us capacity to go even a little bit beyond what we're projecting, right? So there is some kind of cushion built into that final phase of the membrane process?
That's right. And what likely will be the challenge is the volume that, so you can see that we're adding, with number three there, we're adding another aeration basin, as Mike said, as sort of a first phase to the conventional, just adding to the conventional system out there. What's eventually going to happen is there's going to be a need for more volume for tankage. And theoretically, going down the road, you could rethink about repurposing that area, maybe putting some more process volume. Five and six, those clarifiers essentially are there to settle out sludge after the bugs have done what they need to do in the aeration basins. So that's a possibility. Whether that makes sense from the standpoint of hydraulics is another question, and that would need to be looked at. But yes, what Mike said is true. There is the potential for some additional capacity out of this that would get you beyond what the planning period is, what we're predicting for the planning period. And I guess I would add, the other thing I would add is, you know, we're working off of the planning, you know, documents and looking at the service area that the city's established. So, you know, unless there were some major change in assumptions or there were changes in boundaries, it's something to keep in mind, and it's something to consider as people are bringing proposals like that forward.
Now, on the flip side of that, I'm kind of jumping ahead again here, but it does tie right in. These last projects that are shown in red here toward the end of the planning period, you know, we mentioned that the Phase 3 of MBR would give us additional capacity beyond what we're projecting to be needed, but it's also possible that growth will not occur as fast as we're projecting. And so these last projects on the list may end up not being needed, or they may be five, 10 years later than we're assuming. So I think this plan gives us flexibility to adapt, you know, to growth, whether it occurs faster or slower than we're anticipating. And I don't know if I can run through every project on this table, or maybe be more helpful to look at this next one here, where I'm going to again let Dave talk about, you know, we've identified the triggers for population flows and loads that would kick in the need for these projects. And, you know, as we monitor what's coming into the plant, you know, we can adjust our planning accordingly. If it's not on this timeline that we're anticipating here, you know, these can get pushed out or they can get moved up based on real-life data.
So I have two questions that relate specifically to this project, and I'm wondering, at what point does our current system max out without any changes? At what is that point in time in the timeline?
Well, based on our current modeling, it's very soon on the secondary process. And that's the aeration basin and blower here, number two and number three. Those are the most immediate needs we're anticipating, and that's within the next few years.
Twenty-seven, I think, is where it's on the sheet. And then the other question that I had is, I, like the mayor, am not a bioengineer, don't know anything about it, and I claim to be absolutely ignorant. But we're looking at something that needs to be done within the next three to five to seven years with our current system. And we are projecting out 20, close to 20 years. And if you had a crystal ball and you knew, especially Dave, I guess, what are the chances that there's going to be technology within 20 years that would end up making this membrane system not what we really want it to be or require that we'd have to do something different at that 20-year point?
Well, there's always, there are always advances happening in technology. And when I started as a consultant 20 years ago, you know, membranes were cutting-edge, and people were, you know, putting in some of the first plants in the late '90s and the early 2000s. It's very much a fairly common technology now. There are advances that are happening within the membrane market and the vendors who provide this equipment. I would say that, you know, when we started this process, I don't know, three or four years ago, Mike, there were certain assumptions that were made when sizing and trying to consider how much space and how much volume do we need to make these membranes work. There's now another generation of membranes that have been come, you know, that have been brought to the market that simply allows those same membranes or that same capacity we put in sort of a smaller space. Essentially, what needs to happen with wastewater is you need to biologically treat it and remove the solid material. And what's happening with a membrane, just like with the filters, is you're filtering out those solids, which then get routed back and get treated in the solids stream and go to your dryer. There's not, I mean, it can be very complicated, and it can be hard for people to understand. It's not something that people deal with every day, but at a very basic level, we're basically removing solids and we're treating wastewater to remove the undesirable things that we don't want to have in the river. So, long-winded answer, I guess, but we've already seen that there are advances, and, you know, we would encourage the city, as you get closer to the point where you need to think about what needs to happen with something like a membrane facility, is to take a harder look at this again and say, okay, is this still the right technology? Are there advances even within the technology, sort of the area of treatment technology where membranes reside? And make sure that things are sized accordingly.
Now, Dave, is it true, I believe I've, you know, just from conversations we've had, if anything, the advances in membrane technology between now and 2045 may allow us to not have to put in so many? Like, the capacity of the membrane systems themselves are constantly improving, so it may end up that we end up having to build less than we're showing, just because the technology improves by the end of the planning period.
So I just wanted to do a time check on this, because we have more slides to go, and this is, today we're providing feedback on the recommended capital improvement plan for this. So maybe we should continue with the slides, make sure we get to all of them, and determine how we can cover all the additional questions.
Okay. I think I'll just maybe run through the other projects that are shown here. So the blue ones are basically the capacity improvements. So that's, as we mentioned, the new aeration basin, new blowers. And with the membrane facility, we have new fine screens, a new generator and other electrical upgrades. So that's all driven by growth. The green ones here are the seismic resilience improvements. So that's retrofitting existing structures, you know, to withstand the Cascadia earthquake event. And then the purple are essentially old equipment that needs to get replaced. So it's not necessarily driven by growth, just by age. And that's mostly solids, handling equipment, the clarifier mechanisms, and the, we have two UV systems, and one of them is very old and no longer supported by the vendors. And kind of, you know, we're squeezing as much life out of it as we can right now, and so that needs to get replaced. And then there's a fiber optic conduit here shown, that, you know, we talked to our IT folks about, you know, providing that in order to be able to bring fiber from the boundary of the property up into the administration building. So that's, those are kind of the different categories of projects.
I have a question on the bio, or the fiber optic cable. We are, you know, gradually adding fiber optic over time, but this particular section is needed for the upgraded operation of this plant, would you say?
Not necessarily. I think it may be helpful in, like, improving the control systems and the communications. But this was really just something that we consulted with our IT department on, is something that-
We are trying to find those opportunities to put them in. Okay, thank you.
So I don't know that I necessarily need to run through every project on this list, but this is essentially the chronology of the projects. There's the short-term capacity improvements, and then we, you know, we have some of the condition-related projects, you know, for the clarifier mechanisms and the seismic improvements and the UV system. Then we get into our first phase of membranes, then solids, equipment replacement, adding cooling towers for capacity, and then additional membranes, another replacement of that second UV system, and then some hydraulic improvements toward the end as flows exceed the capacity of the plant, and then finally, that last phase of the membrane project. So it's quite an expansive list of work that needs to be done. So it's quite an expansive list of work that's, you know, needs to be done. And so our, you know, again, we have this trigger plot, which allows us to check what numbers we're actually seeing at the plant, you know, and if the flows and loads are increasing faster than we think or slower, we can adjust the timing of the projects accordingly. And then, you know, if we proceed with this plan, you know, I just have outlined our next steps. We have a planning commission tentatively scheduled for next month to present this same findings. And then we would have public hearings with city council in January. And our immediate follow up project would be to do the sewer system rate study and SDC update to figure out how to finance these improvements. And that's that's our last slide.
I have a question.
Sure.
Thank you for your report. I'm also not a bio bioengineer. So I tried to understand as much as I could. And one of the it seemed like the recommended membrane option was based partially because of the land constraints. Is that correct?
Right. We we have to use some kind of intensification process, more advanced technology, just because of the limited space. And then the membranes out of the three that we looked at were going to provide us the most reliable capacity for growth, as well as changes in regulatory requirements such as nitrification, you know, other limits that we don't currently have, but we're likely to see.
So if you were able to expand into, let's say, the ODOT property, would that if if we had that option, would we still be looking at membrane as our best option?
Well, the ODOT property is only a very slim parcel next to us, between us and the highway. And my understanding is that's going to be used as part of the Boone Bridge expansion.
OK, so that ruled that one out. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions and a comment. I noted it's clear that because the effluent actually ends up in the Willamette, and this is it's downstream or upstream from our water source?
Downstream.
So it is downstream from our water source. Nevertheless, this is a to me, from an infrastructure standpoint, this is a critical element of our city's infrastructure. And making sure that because that effluent is draining in or going moving into, no matter how clean it is, is still going into the Willamette, that we have to keep the quality of our water treatment facility as high as possible, whether it is seismic, whether it is clinging to adapt to our population growth, or whatever it may be. So I appreciate very much the fact that you're thinking forward and you're looking at what the potential is down the road. It's not burning off. It's not, you know, doing anything, but it is going into water. And it it is a source of water for for many of us, whether or not it gets dirty when it gets closer to the Portland metro area or whatever, it is still a water source. So I appreciate where you're coming from on this.
Yes, thank you.
If I recall, the effluent is regulated, right?
Right, the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality.
We can't do anything about.
Highly regulated.
Yeah, highly regulated. So we don't get to say whether it's going to be up, down, or sideways, right?
Well, if we don't take care of it, we won't be really doing anything. We'll be out of business.
We'll be out of business. Yeah, exactly. And that's what my point was. We will be out of business.
Another big point here is that this leads us to the step of identifying how to fund 120 million.
Oh, thank you for saying that.
That is a big part. That is our next big project. And I, as we've heard at, I mean, that is another big study for this council. As we've heard at League of Oregon Cities and meetings with other mayors, building these treatment plants is not easy, and they're very expensive. So I'm glad that we're starting on this now and getting an eye on the the fact that it's a must do. And this is first part of many discussions about this.
Yes.
Unrelated question, or at least not directly related. Were we aware that we were going to have this come up for these required changes when we passed the Parks SDCs less than 90 days ago?
Well, this is.
I saw that some of it's coming through SDCs.
But this is a different.
A completely different SDC. OK, thank you.
Well.
But to your point, counselor, we were very mindful of, because you increase one SDC, I mean, it's going to have an impact on affordability.
That's where I was coming from.
So we we were very mindful of that with our Parks SDCs and really narrowed down that project list to a much more manageable set of projects so that we were, because we're going to be coming back with sewer and water and transportation SDCs. So it all adds up.
As a junior counselor, as a junior counselor, that was where my question was coming from is an SDC is an SDC is an SDC at the end of the day.
Somebody pays.
There is a net sum game, no matter where it's coming from, where it's going to be applied, it's still going to impact development, system development charges.
And Parks is the one area where we have a little more flexibility because it's not a hard quote unquote infrastructure.
Yep, got it. Thank you.
Well, we're we are going to have opportunity for more discussion on this, and I would encourage the counselors to call a city manager and if you want to set up another meeting to discuss any of this in more detail.
Yeah, just all the technical.
Well, I think that would be for you. That would be, you know, you're going to get your bioengineering PhD in the next couple weeks. No, I think you're free to call. Well, thank you very much.
OK, thank you.
And now we'll move to another really big, important project related to infrastructure, our stormwater master plan update.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Carrie Rappel, the city's natural resources manager. And with me here tonight is the city's consultant, Angela Wayland, with Brown and Caldwell. So yes, we're going to give you basically a preview of what she'll be seeing with the draft stormwater master plan. And hopefully, I can make this work. I think I'm going to need a hand right away. Thank you.
Can you?
Which one? Thank you. Oh, that's right. You're going to go in there. Yeah. There we go. And I can just start the.
In the air.
Think so. All right. I'm not that adept with some of these things here. So so, yes, so, yeah, in your packet tonight is an executive summary that gives a synopsis of what will be in the plan, as well as the draft capital project sheets. And like I said, we want to give you a preview of the draft master plan that will be coming before the council. So we're going to just go through this pretty quickly tonight. There will certainly be other opportunities in the future, especially when we get to before you with that draft plan. But it's really kind of a opportunity to to discuss this and give you a little bit of insight into it. We've been working on this for about two years, a little over two years. So some of the topics we'll look at tonight are basically the outreach that we did back in 2021 and the input that we received from the community. We'll go through some of the steps that we followed to develop the plan. One of the really important items here, we were just talking with the wastewater master or with the master plan, was, you know, this idea of the regulatory drivers. And we have a couple that are really important. It's called our NPDS MS4 permit. And then we also have what's called TMDL implementation plans. And so one of the things we've been able to do with this plan is to actually show those connections in terms of what we have to do and what we're responsible for. And then we'll talk a little bit about the technical evaluations, which include some of the assessments, modeling, and things that we looked at from that perspective. And then we'll finish it up with just give you an idea of what the capital program's going to look like in terms of the projects and some of the programs that are within that. And like I said, you have these draft capital project sheets. So it gives you an idea of sort of the scale of some of these projects. Some of them are very substantial in terms of, you know, the work that needs to be done and the situations that we need to deal with. And then we'll just talk a little bit about next steps. So back in 2021, we did some outreach with the community, and there was a survey that was online for about six weeks. And we had a pretty high turnout in terms of that, 90, over 90 participants. Also had some information that was in the Boones Ferry Messenger and some information that we put up on social media. And it was kind of interesting in terms of the results that we got. One that was very pleasing was that people feel like we're doing a pretty good job here in Wilsonville with how we manage stormwater. And certainly their interest in terms of what they're looking at, you know, that they want to see, you know, what we can do to protect and, if possible, restore our streams and bring back some of those aquatic species that, you know, may not be there today, as well as what are we doing to, you know, effectively deal with water quality. And then one thing we're fortunate in this community, we really don't have a lot of flooding issues. But where we do have some potential for that, you know, we're looking at how we can deal with that appropriately. And then basically, how do we deal with our infrastructure in terms of what's necessary and how we maintain that? People mention that, you know, they're really interested in sort of like thinking outside the box, and how can we pursue that? And that's something that Wilsonville has always been interested in. And then, you know, natural solutions in terms of how do we deal with that? One of the things you're going to hear tonight in terms of the Frog Pond Development Code is something called low impact development. And that's certainly a very natural way to deal with stormwater. And then residents just always feel that they could use some more information. So we're always looking at ways that we can get that information out into the community and make people, you know, aware of what we're doing. So now I'm going to turn it over to Angela to walk through the the master plan itself.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to talk at first a little bit about our process. As Carrie mentioned, we started work in 2021, kind of in the middle of the pandemic. And so our project started with a more comprehensive needs assessment. We wanted to focus our technical efforts on the areas of the city that were of most concern. So this process involved a data collection effort. We also solicited a lot of feedback from city staff via surveys and conducting interviews, as well as solicited feedback from the public via the online survey results that Carrie had mentioned before. Collectively, that identified project needs or problem areas within the city that we wanted to be sure and focus our technical evaluations on, which was the next step of our process. Once we completed all those technical evaluations, we identified what we called project opportunity areas. And these were areas that would benefit from a capital project recommendation or a citywide program recommendation. And then we would look at costs, cost estimates for each of those projects or programs. And you've seen some of the fact sheets and those cost estimates in your packet right now. Right now, the phase of the project we're in is the implementation side. So we've been reviewing staffing levels within the city to make sure that we have staff that can support those projects and programs, as well as prioritize those resulting projects to make sure that we can schedule them in a way that makes the most sense for the city. We've currently completed kind of an internal review draft of the master plan, and you'll be shortly seeing a draft of the master plan in the next few weeks. We're also prepping for our second virtual open house and stakeholder outreach outreach process, which is tentatively scheduled for December. I don't know if I can. Also, as Carrie mentioned, the master plan gave us an opportunity to streamline some of the requirements that stem from your regulations. So that's your MS4 permit, your stormwater, your municipal stormwater permit, which was just reissued in 2021, as well as your TMDL implementation plan. So there's a lot of deliverables and studies that are required with each of those different regulatory programs that the master plan gave us an opportunity to streamline for you. So we could address, in the context of the master plan, various deliverables, establish new programs that are needed, and more importantly, identify what staffing levels you also need to support those regulatory requirements and make sure that that's incorporated into any future funding and rate analysis. So, yeah. Those arrows just reflect kind of the correlation of the different requirements. Let's see. OK. As you saw in the process slide, there were a series of technical evaluations. So we did that initial data compilation effort. We identified those problem areas. But those problem areas really inform where we wanted to do a little bit more detailed technical look. So we updated the city's existing hydrologic and hydraulic model that helps us inform capacity deficiencies within the city's infrastructure. We conducted a stream assessment, which involved both a desktop analysis and a stream walk to see what was the condition, what were the conditions of the stream corridors? Were there were those stream corridors impacted by development and what we call hydro modification? Do we need projects along those stream corridors to make them more stable? And also, that stream assessment allows us to baseline what the conditions of your streams are so that we know if development is going to or development does change the function of those receiving waters. We looked at water quality retrofits in the context of our project opportunity areas and project identification efforts. Water quality retrofits are projects that enhance or increase stormwater treatment that basically remove pollutants from the system before it discharges to receiving waters. And finally, we conducted a maintenance needs evaluation. We did a more in depth interview with public works maintenance staff to identify what activities they do on a regular basis, which activities they're unable to do due to staffing shortages or other limitations, and how could we help enhance or improve public works activities Following the technical evaluations, we identified 47 project opportunities. And these were discrete locations of the city that we could address via either project or program, and that would help address the following objectives, including capacity or limited capacity in the system, areas of recurring maintenance, where does public work staff get called out all the time, and they really don't want to have to keep going out there if there's an improvement we can make to the system. Repair and replacement needs, so these are areas where the condition of the system is deteriorating, and we want to proactively replace that asset. Where do we need additional infrastructure to support new development and redevelopment in some of our growth areas of the city? Where do we want to improve water quality, add additional treatment where water quality isn't currently provided, or enhance existing infrastructure with water quality treatment function? We just need to increase how well it does or improve how well it does. And then finally, erosion and sediment control, looking at those in-stream corridors and identifying what improvements we need to make in areas where erosion is shown. We reviewed all of those project opportunities with city staff in a series of workshops. And from that, we were able to vet which areas of the city required us to look at and do some conceptual design, some preliminary cost estimates as part of a capital project. Those are the fact sheets and the capital project cost estimates that you have in front of you. There were also opportunities to address some of those project opportunity areas as part of a program. And so these would be dedicated funding sources to do improvements at a citywide scale. A lot of times, these recurring maintenance activities are relatively low cost project that wouldn't necessarily require funding under a capital capital project. But we wanted to establish some programs that would provide ease of access to city staff to address those recurring needs. So I mentioned that we're kind of in the implementation phase of the master plan now. We've recently completed a staffing analysis where we've looked at staffing levels for both public works maintenance staff and engineering and community development staff. Those staffing levels were looked at from the master plan specifically, the capital projects and programs that are proposed to you, so that we know what increase in staffing we would need to perform maintenance on that additional assets or that additional infrastructure, as well as manage the projects that come out of the master plan. But we also looked at those NPDS and your TMDL drivers too, to determine what additional But we also looked at those NPDS and your TMDL drivers too, to determine what additional staffing needs you'll need to execute those permit requirements over the five-year permit term. We've recently wrapped up our project prioritization effort. We used what we called a multi-criteria decision tool. It's a fancy word for spreadsheet. But we looked at various criteria and weighting factors. And with city staff, we scored each of the different capital projects against those criteria. And ultimately, that scoring process informs the priority of those projects and presumably the scheduling of those projects.
So I can just finish up here. So Angela mentioned, we're actually at a staff level, just starting the review of the draft master plan, and then we'll be working with her team to finalize it. So we're looking, you know, probably more at January or February in terms of coming to the city council. But, you know, and then Angela alluded to that in December, we'll be doing another public outreach event just to solicit some more input. And, you know, one of the important things certainly is, you saw with the wastewater treatment plant, you know, we're looking at, you know, how do we implement this in terms of that, that list of capital projects and what's in the short term, the midterm and long term? So we're looking at a twenty-year period in terms of doing this. And there's some substantial costs involved with this. So we'll also be looking at a rate study, you know, when we finalize this plan and see how we go about implementing this. And so, yeah, like I said, we'll, we'll be, you know, finalizing that plan as soon as we can and then taking it through the planning commission as well as the city council. So we can now take any questions that you might have at this point.
When, when do you anticipate starting the rate study?
We're going to definitely do it next year. So I would assume that probably by, you know, mid-year we'll be in that process.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Just a quick comment. I was taken aback at the sheer number of projects.
Yeah.
And, and the amount, you kept talking about headcount and staffing levels. Are you seeing a shortfall right now, given our staffing levels that we have right now to be able to complete this?
Yeah, we're currently reviewing that. You know, it's, it's likely that we might see some type of increase, especially from the maintenance perspective. But we need to take that through the process yet and see, you know, what, what that'll look like as far as any changes to the, the numbers. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
This is the evening for huge projects.
Yes.
And now we'll move to the Frog Pond East and South Development Code with Mr. Pauli.
Good evening, council. Good to be with you again. Just a moment to power this up. All right. Thank you. So I wanted to start this evening by just giving a shout out to those supporting this effort, which has been ongoing for a while, particularly our development partners, West Hills, including Dan Grinberg, who's here with us tonight for their thoughtful input that's helped guide the drafting of this code over the next time period. Also, Walker, Macy, and MIG, our consultants that have helped test and guide our drafting, which I'll talk a bit more about later, as well as the great community development team that's supported all this effort. And finally, the planning commission and their valuable insights and guidance as we work through this. So tonight's agenda, you'll be seeing this on the agenda a lot in the coming months as we're breaking this into pieces as there's a lot going on with this effort. But tonight's agenda is focused, first of all, on more stormwater discussion and then following that, housing variety. So on stormwater, Carrie, as you know, is here as well as Zach Weigel to assist and answer any questions as needed. I do want to note these standards, while being developed with this Frog Pond East and South project, are in a section of the code that will apply to residential development citywide, which some of these standards we've been developing are. The overall intent is to follow and clarify current practices and provide clearer guidance to our development partners. And as Carrie, Angela recently talked about, a lot of this, of course, is driven by federal permitting and to ensure our clean waterways. So just wanted to run through what is in these proposed draft standards. There's the purpose statement, which again gets to the permitting and the clean water. The emphasizing that low-impact development practices are required to have it decentralized and integrated into the development. There's also language encouraging minimizing of the impervious surfaces that need to be treated through such things as green roofs, impervious pavement. None of that's required, but it's encouraged. The main part of these standards is to set clear location prioritization, which would be located throughout a development. And some examples of what these are would be medians and planar strips along streets, curb extensions at intersections, unpaved areas along alleys, shoulder areas along like mid-block bike paths around the edges of parks and open spaces. However, when you, there's only so much land in the right of way, and that's not the only thing that needs to go on our street scape. So the other key part of this is identifying conflicting design elements and uses, which include things like streetlights, street trees, utility vaults that need to be located there if we can't identify an alternative location. And so really, what it ends up saying is these other elements take precedent as long as there's not an alternative place to put them. And then wherever there's still space in those areas should be used for stormwater. The other component in these draft standards is the streamline waiver process, which gives some authority to the engineering staff to work through designs. Something that's true about stormwater is, as you're trying to go with how it naturally flowed, you have, every design is fairly unique to a site. So there needs to be some flexibility in there while at the same time providing some clear guidance and guidelines to the developer. So I'll leave it at that. I do want to though mention and acknowledge that West Hills still has some concerns that we're still working through and addressing specifically concerns about how this impacts density and affordability, which as we're looking at all these technical standards, we keep that in mind, but we still want to continue to test and understand that and still update things as needed to make sure we're doing the best we can. So with that, I will open it up to questions around these stormwater standards and recognize we do still have quite a bit of variety, housing variety to talk about once we're done here, so.
I did want to ask if you could just talk again about the concerns about affordability? Is, just expand that. Is it that the cost of doing all this is going to be getting in the, you know, prohibitive to some affordability?
So there's two parts of it. First of all, anything that takes, takes up land, takes away potential land for housing development.
Right.
The other component of it is if the infrastructure is more expensive, that raises housing costs as well.
It's a reasonable question.
Yeah. Always looking for a balance.
Have you heard of any state funding to help with stormwater management in, in these climate action motivated leadership?
There's discussion about infrastructure funding in general, but nothing specific to stormwater that I heard, unless Carrie or Zach have heard, has heard of anything additional.
Most of those would be geared toward communities that are less affluent. They do have some grants and stuff for smaller rural communities for infrastructure, major infrastructure, but nothing that I've seen that would apply to Wilsonville.
And a lot of what's been discussed likely in the upcoming session will likely be for site-specific, like project-specific, rather than like infrastructure to support a wider area. But we have brought it to the state's attention and be helpful, especially for smaller projects that maybe one or two million dollar projects that can be important projects to get an area moving for housing that should be considered as well, so.
Well, it might be something we should make a note of, even though they're not funding that right now, but because Wilsonville does have greater capacity to add housing than a lot of other communities, if we could have some outside support for these mandatory and important stormwater projects, we might be able to make a dent in adding more affordable housing.
I will note that that has been a constant argument that all local government has had, either through League of Oregon Cities or the state. It's not, it's not a lack of land issue. And it's, it's more an issue of infrastructure is extremely expensive. And if you want to get to the affordability aspect of it, you know, all, all we can do as local government is make sure that we're increasing SDCs to make sure that we can pay for growth, to make way for that land to be developed. So if you want to get at affordability, there's going to have to be some outside funding sources.
And so even though that has been a discussion for many years and people have talked about it for a long time, the, the pressure for adding housing is higher than it's ever been. And the, and we have capacity to make a difference with adding affordable housing. So perhaps we want to think about doing something different? I don't know if it's a bill or what, to put, put added pressure on not only helping smaller cities fund some of these things, but helping larger cities that have the capacity to materially affect the housing shortage.
Good point.
I think your point is really well taken. I think the issue is probably common among all cities that have land, undeveloped land within their current urban growth boundaries.
And so it's just let's make it possible to do it.
Well, and I think we have seen in some of the smaller communities where they have had urban growth land available, they do not have the resources to be able to put in the infrastructure. And so they have not developed it. And then there's pressure to take that land away from them.
Certainly something we do anticipate being talked about even in the short session quite a bit, so.
So could, could you make a note to talk to Mr. Ottenott about that, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll continue that conversation with Mark.
So I guess the question I have about the stormwater, the proposed design standards is we're looking at this in terms of Frog Pond South and East, but your comment was that these will be applicable across the city from this point on if they are adopted.
Right.
So my question, I guess, is how would the, how are these different than, let's say, our most recent development that has been in Villebois? And would it have, would these have made any significant difference in the way those properties, that those developments were, were developed in, in the, in the recent past?
Sure. I will do my best to answer that question. And if Zach or Carrie have anything to add, they're welcome to. First of all, Villebois was developed under different standards. Actually, a lot of Villebois is like, you have the green infrastructure, like the LID, as well as additional gray infrastructure like pipes, just because it was an earlier era of this type of development. So it was a different standard. We, as mentioned, these are, the intent is to make these similar to what we've been trying to apply like in Frog Pond West. There is some inconsistency because we don't really have standards like this in our code. We have our public works standards of how to build the different facilities, but in terms of how big they can be or how, how do, how do you balance the use of the planting strip between street trees and streetlights and, and storm facilities isn't, isn't clear? And so really, this is an attempt to, to memorialize the intent of what we've been trying to do and make it clear from the offset for those developers and their engineers that are designing these stormwater systems.
Isn't, isn't one of the main differences that we're moving away from the bigger kind of detention ponds to spreading out stormwater controls throughout?
Yeah, it's the main, a key tenet of this is decentralized, treating it as close to the source as, as, as practicable and, and using natural processes to treat it rather than putting it all in a pipe and through artificial filters.
And there are trade-offs with that from a development standpoint.
So one of the things I think that I recall from Frog Pond West was the idea of almost like a retention kind of basin that was between the, like where the sidewalk and the curb along some of those bases of property. I don't see that.
Yeah, so that's, that would be the, the along, one of the key things here is clarifying along streets, it's encouraged, but not where there's on-street parking, because that's obviously something we've heard that you don't want to step out of your car into a, into a ditch.
The bio soil.
Into a ditch.
Right. Yeah.
So I have a, that's a good improvement because I've, I'm sure people have had problems with that. On page one of three, section four point one one three, where it lists the required open space characteristics, open grass area for recreational play, I mean, basically all of those, we've got new wildlife habitat areas. Can you talk about how this might be, what has been done to look at maybe reducing the, is there a way to reduce the amount of cultivated lawn and add more of the natural plantings to help slow down the, you know, is there anything to be done there balancing that out to help with stormwater? Is that part of this plan?
So first of all, under open space under one here, that's something that was adopted by council, I believe it was in 21, as part of a residential code update. So that's existing language except for where it's outlined.
What I'm bringing up, though, is, is the, the concept of open play area, that's great. But, but as we go forward, how do we balance cultivated lawn with natural areas to perhaps help with this stormwater?
Yeah, so there's, there's a couple, a couple thoughts there is, first of all, on C there, it says non-fenced vegetated stormwater features are counted as open space. So when we adopted these standards a few years ago, we tried to balance it because you do need that active open space, we call it, where, you know, it's a play area, it's a, it's a play, play structure. So there's two requirements in our open space. There's an overall open space, which the storm, unfenced storm facilities can count towards these ponds and such. But then there is the more formal open space, active open space that obviously generally there are dual use, and that's been discussed where, you know, you can have like Palermo Park, for example. There are some technical difficulties with that, but generally speaking, the stormwater area and active play area are not going to be the, the same.
I realize that, yeah.
So, but also already, I mean, for decade plus, our, our code standards have discouraged just turf area if it has no purpose.
So kind of to summarize what you're presenting, instead of having one large detention pond, we'd scatter out where water is being. we'd scatter out where water is being drained and processed, right?
Correct, and that's the overall intent, however, with these conflicting uses, there will be time still where, you know, you'll maximize where you can put it on these smaller facilities, but still in the end, you may need a larger facility at the end, because there's just not enough street medians and alleys and such to, to put all the treatment that's needed. So you may still have some larger areas, but they're, they're smaller than they otherwise would be if you weren't using the rest of these, maximizing the use of these other decentralized spaces.
Doesn't look like we have any more questions at the moment about this.
Of course, happy to talk about this one-on-one or in groups as needed later. So let's move into housing variety. So this is one, and I wanted to start by doing a bit of background. We've talked about this briefly before, but I believe it was February we were last talked about it. And some things I wanted to highlight, and I'll address this in more detail in a minute, but a number of code approaches as we work on this housing variety are different and new to address changing needs as well as a changing regulatory framework. We've spent time over the last number of months discussing refining to ensure the standards function as desired, as they are different than we've used elsewhere in the city, and not a lot of clear precedent even in the region. We've hired MIG and Walker Macy as consultants to run design scenarios to test the standards, to try to break them, to see where there's holes, or try to get feedback, as well as West Hills, as a private development partner, has put together concept plans, which has been valuable to understand and test and refine our standards. So we've continued to work and want to present where we are at this point with you. The other thing, I thought it'd be helpful to kind of understand what we're doing here is a bit of compare and contrast with Villebois, which most of this council is quite familiar with. There's this idea of variety throughout, and variety exists in both master planned areas, but it has to be approached differently. Well, Villebois is mapped and assigned to each housing type to a specific location, allowing some variability in that. That's not possible in Frog Pond due to the state middle housing rules and statutes, which are based on this concept of middle housing being allowed on every lot, which leads to a broader approach in general of having, allowing each housing type on each lot. So this subsequently leads to a performance approach to variety without assigning the specific housing types to, or buckets of housing types to specific land. So you see on this map, you see, you know, a much more broad colors in Frog Pond East and South versus the very detailed colors in Villebois, but essentially what you get is you're, the developer's able to take all those colors you see in Villebois and move them around somewhere within certain confines. So I mean, that's kind of, I hope that helps kind of more clarify, compare and contrast kind of what we're doing here. In a lot of ways, we're trying to do the same sort of thing, we just need to do it differently.
So kind of just to summarize, what you just said, that in Villebois, the city was dictating the locations and different sizes of housing, and in Frog Pond East and South, the developer is going to get a little more leeway working with the city general sightings.
Yeah, where they, essentially, it's a performance type where, you know, you need to have this much different type of housing, and, and these are the different, like, sizes they're allowed, but you can put it with, you can put it, you have flexibility where to put it within those, within those parameters.
So performance versus prescriptive.
Right, in a lot of ways.
Dan, if I can ask a question about that, though, because it seems to me in this document, we're talking about being somewhat prescriptive.
Yeah.
In that the type one housing is pretty well prescribed to be around that Brisbane area, and, I mean, conceptually, we're talking about type one housing being in specific areas and then feathering out, I think, is.
Yeah, so that same concept exists in both areas. And type one housing, though, is like a number of different housing, you can, it's 10 different types of housing that can, because type one more doesn't refer to like apartment or condo necessarily or anything like that, it refers to buildings that have this type of setback and this type of width, but they can be any type of housing.
Okay.
So it's a different approach, so.
Well, I know that conceptually, I think from the very beginning, we talked about all of these areas, even though they have colors on them, that they really were a mixture of all of the types of housing.
Correct, because variety of housing throughout the master plan was a key tenet of the master plan. And so that's what we're really trying to get to. And so I wanted to review briefly some of the key tools that we're using to do that, to set these parameters. First of all, to divide the different, all the different potential housing types that we can think of into categories, to simplify the code, so we come up with the four categories, ranging from category A, which is essentially apartments and condos, to category B, which is middle housing, a lot of townhouses, but also allowing duplexes, triplexes, category C cottage clusters, ADUs, kind of single level, smaller units, and category D detached homes and other homes that take a similar shape. And then you have the urban form we've been talking about, which goes from type one to type three, which is really, talks about setbacks, larger buildings, closeness of buildings, where, again, they're not, you're allowed all housing types, but some housing types will gravitate to one or the other naturally, because they better fit in the envelope essentially that, that that urban form encourages or allows.
I have a quick, quick question.
Sure.
Given the fact that you are allowing more flexibility for the developer within, within those sectors, is there any governor or guardrail in place, so to speak, to protect us from having the developer only build those properties that are of greater profitability to them, particularly if we're in a, you know, a down economy?
So, I mean, you had similar, I mean, we were building out Villebois in the middle of the recession, and so, I mean, you had similar things. I mean, that can happen, and there is, will be flexibility on phasing, but we think there's enough market and enough, as long as the infrastructure's there, the housing will be built, as long as.
But the developer will have the ultimate control on what they're going to build.
What phasing, yes.
Got it.
But I, but I think I read in here that there will be maximums and minimums within areas.
Yes.
And that there will be some mandatory, like middle housing will be mandatory.
Yes, but a developer, I think what Councilor Dunwell is saying is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that if you have that in a, in an area, you could build detached homes in phase one, and then the middle housing in phase two. So getting to what you were saying about those areas and really controlling it on a geographic basis is this concept of sub-districts. You get a similar thing in both Villebois and Frog Pond West. In Villebois, we call them SAPs, but similar concept where you have smaller geographies within the master plan that really you regulate within that area. So when, so generally speaking, there, there'll probably be some strategic alternatives potentially where it makes sense, but generally speaking, all those variety requirements would be applied at this level. So that, you know, not all middle housing is in one corner and all apartments are in another corner. That's something that, through the master plan, that variety throughout, again, is something that's a key tenet. So from the master plan, some of those key ideas that what we're regulating, and council has already gone to some of these, is the maximum of any one unit category within one of these sub-districts, or within a development. The minimum of target unit categories, so we talked about these target unit categories, middle housing, we also have mobility-friendly units we're talking about, and those are set at a sub-district, or where it's smaller, you have a tax lot. We also put in parameters for if you're just developing one tax lot within a sub-district, what that looks like. Also encouraging, and what we found originally, as we're developing this, we're looking at putting standards for each block, but we found that there were some issues with that just from a functional standpoint and site planning standpoint. We found the sub-district is a good level, because it encourages still close proximity. In a lot of cases, you will get variety on each block, but if it makes more sense from site planning to put the different housing on the next block over across the street, it allows for that. So that, so, or similar is what we're actually recommending, rather than actually requiring that there's so many different types of housing on every single block.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
In, in some of the direction that you're looking for in this discussion right now was, does the city council support the general approach to measuring minimum and maximum standards related to housing variety? Is what you just talked about part of that question? Like the very, the flexibility and proximity of, of that type of housing?
Yes.
Okay. So do you want us to, to talk more about that now, to get to that question?
Yeah, we can, we can, if you want to pause now and ask some specific question.
Just while we're on that, I just wanted to see if you could get, get to some of the pluses and minuses.
So, I mean, you had, it's a balance between, I mean, there's some efficiencies in land planning that you want to be able to, and again, we're talking about affordability, there's, there's some, so let me back up here. So there's certainly, we want this variety, and that's important in terms of affordability, because you need different price points for different people in different situations and different incomes, and you want that in close proximity. But at the same time, you don't want to require that in such proximity that it actually unintentionally requires difficulties in land planning and laying it out that actually increase cost, or causes inefficiencies that increase cost. So that's really what we're trying to balance.
How do we articulate that in our plan, in our guidance?
So by allow, by, I think it's about establishing the geography, the right geography to analyze and apply the standards on, where as, as we've thought about it, is you don't want to drive it where you're really going to have, require housing to be a type, where you're going to allow a chunk of like, you know, one to two acres at least for a housing type, so you can plan a reasonable-sized chunk of land, where, and also where you're not forcing townhouses and apartments to be on the same block, which can have awkward interactions. And so it's, those are, so those are the sorts of things we're balancing, where you want to make sure the requirements allow enough area for one housing type to be built in efficient and quality site planning.
I have, go ahead. See? Yeah. So I have a question. From what you're describing, in my mind, I visualize that these neighborhoods are going to look different to the passerby than from the Frog Pond that's already developed.
Certainly.
Yeah, like, wait, I'm, like, right now, when I look at the Frog Pond development that's there, I kind of see homogeneous buildings, that same color, same size, same landscaping, if there's any landscaping, and I visualize this looking quite a bit different. Would you agree?
I would agree.
So the only concern that I have about one of the, and I, I agree with having the max, and, and being flexible enough that we don't prescribe, so that we make it more costly. I am a little bit concerned about the type one housing and the, the statement in here that says that they will have a tendency to be taller, and then smaller in the two, in the type two and type three? Is that correct?
Yeah.
So I'm thinking about affordability, and I'm thinking about some of those, like you have accessible, some of those accessible units, it would be great if they were in some of the type one housing, even if they were detached homes or condos or whatever that could be a single level. So is there going to be that kind of flexibility for smaller units?
Yeah, you could do smaller cottage units in type one, and just on small lots, because there's, you can also do like ground, the ground floor, if you talk about the, the kind of the accessible units, you could do ground floor of a multi-story building, flats that are, and also, we've seen concepts of a ground floor ADU unit in a townhouse that can also be inaccessible, or mobility-friendly. I want to be careful about using accessible, because we're not requiring like ADA restrooms and things like that. It's just where you wouldn't have to, you know, put in ramps or, or, or things to, to adapt a home for limited mobility.
So given, when I start to knit all of this together, you say you're moving away from a more prescriptive model?
It's still fairly prescriptive, though, it's just.
Because, one, just from a personal perspective, maybe this is part of the fact that I've been married to an architect for 40 years, that he sits there and he'll say, why was that developer allowed to take that house and place it on, in this location when the bay window or the only large window faces the, the flat side of the, the house next door, when there's actually an open space over here, because someone just was not paying attention to when it was designed? And I don't know if, when you talk about prescriptive versus less prescriptive, if you can get down to that granular level or not with the developer, but I do get concerned, going back to what you said, about, you know, having a cottage right next door to a four-story apartment.
Apartment. Yeah, and that's why we want to allow the, so, because a developer won't tend to do that unless they're forced to, so we want to allow them to, you know, if you're going to do a cottage, do a group of cottages that, you know, are across the street from the apartment or something, rather than like sandwich, a little cottage sandwich between, you know, think of the movie Up or something, right? You know, that's not what we're talking about here. To your point, there are certain places that are high priority that, similar to Villebois where there's addresses, where it's like high, high priority design areas, where we are putting in some specific requirements, including along Stafford and advanced frontages, as well as requirements for how, how homes interact with parks and green spaces. I think we got to these, and we've kind of talked about the approach of minimum target units, so I won't go into this, but really, the intent of how we're presenting it, we've talked about kind of the concepts, is really wanting to make it clear that there's a precise number, there's no question, it's clear to staff, it's clear to the designer, and it's just trying to encourage clarity of how we present it, and simple, in a, a simple and clear way as we can in the code. So this is an example of how it may show up, the actual requirements for the middle housing and other units in the code.
And, and those are yet to come.
These are, these are some drafts, which we won't really analyze in our little bit of time today, but yeah, you'll get a look at the final numbers as we, as they're, as they're continuing to be refined. And then the max is, rather than unit count, is on net area. Really, the key concept here to think about is that we don't want, because even if, for example, if you're doing multi-family, we don't, still don't want it to be a tower in the middle, we don't want the landscape of, of the area to be dominated by one housing type. So this is why we're looking at the net area. There's some, there's some practical reasons why that works too, as, as the item we're measuring in terms of the maximum. Something else I'll mention is, when you think you don't want it to dominate, 50% may come to mind as kind of the natural choice. That doesn't really work, because then you end up kind of with a logjam, if you will, or a traffic jam, where you or a traffic jam, where you have two unit types that have the exact amount of, of units, and then there's no flexibility either way. You're kind of stuck. If someone wants to say, oh, let's, let's build another unit of another townhouse over here, there's not that flexibility, and we don't want to remove that flexibility. So it'd be more somewhere north of 50, and it will vary based on the size of the lot. So the thing about this code, we have to write it for a 50-acre lot and a two-acre lot where it works. So, so there's some of that. So that's why I didn't put the exact percentage it will be in. There's some nuance there that we'll present at a future work session based on the size of the actual lot that we're applying it to. And so that is the extent of my presentation. Other input and guidance, I'd appreciate.
Well, I appreciate that you're, we, with, with staff and, and the planning commission too are looking for clarity here, so that I'm just concerned about, you know, I'm glad that you're, we need to continue to think about clarity and how to communicate this so that we don't end up in a difficult to understand and administer code. Where like after it's been being built for a little while, there's a point of a great deal of debate about what can or cannot be done in a certain place because they did it here. It's going to be a challenge.
It is. I liken it to, because I've, I've had articles published before, and if you've ever gone through that process, you write something big and it ends up this big after the editor's done with it.
Right.
You know, that's kind of what we're moving towards. You know, we, we have all these concepts and we're trying to simplify it down and just present it in the clearest, simplest way we can. So that is important and a priority.
Any other input, guidance, comments?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, so that brings us to, or right on time, Boones Ferry Park projects update.
Share it. Share. All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Fitzgerald and members of council. My name is Dustin Schull. I'm the park supervisor here for the city of Wilsonville, and joining me tonight is one of our lead parks maintenance specialists, Zach Moore. It's our privilege to be here before you tonight to talk about three different projects that are going on in Boones Ferry, two of which are on consent for your consideration tonight.
Yeah, as Dustin said, thank you for having us here. First, I just want to give a little background on Boones Ferry Park. It's Wilsonville's third largest park, roughly 15 acres with about half of that natural areas, the old Duckworth property and Grove across the street. The last significant upgrade was in the 90s when that, the current playground was put in in 1997. This being one of our three regional parks, we're really excited to get some projects running, just to invest in this park for the community. In 2018, a master plan was adopted, and in that master plan, really called out Wilsonville's greatest asset was this riverfront, riverfrontage. So we're really excited to get some of these projects going in hopes to get that riverfront access in the future. Throughout that whole master plan, it really called out accessibility over and over again. So all these projects we're bringing forward really focus on accessibility. And lastly, just updating these amenities. If you've been to Boones Ferry Park, a lot of them are old, so we're really excited to bring this forward. Currently, we have three major projects going, two of them receiving grant funds. All three are slated to be completed in the summer of 2024. First one being that North Trail, it's highlighted in blue right there. We're currently finishing our construction design, and this was a recipient of the Wilsonville Metro's Community Enhancement Project. And then the second two are why we're here tonight on resolution, our restroom build, which I'll be speaking on, and then our playground, which Dustin will touch on after. So this is our current restroom. It's 30 years old with aging fixtures. And with those aging fixtures, we've seen a lot of extended closures over the last few years. Our parks team and facilities team have done a good job to kind of piece together this bathroom. But at the end of the day, you know, 30 years of wear and tear on a bathroom, we feel like it's finally time. There are numerous ADA shortcomings, such as the slope, you can kind of see on that top picture where the asphalt meets the concrete. It is a little steep for ADA spec. And then the space concerns, both in the men's and women's side, just for having a wheelchair turn around, we feel is a little tight. The big one for us is just that lack of automatic door openers. With all our new builds moving forward, that's going to be a standard we, we should be on. Excuse me. One thing brought forward to us from our janitorial staff is the limited storage space. So in the back of the bathroom, there's a storage unit, we call them breezeways. You can't even walk into it, there's just a few shelves to house toilet paper. We should have, you know, room to keep our kayaks, our pressure washers when we need them. Yeah, at the end of the day, it's just a challenge to meet the community standard. Can you go back one more, sorry?
Sorry.
The extended work time, so we track all our cleaning time in Cartograph, and week after week, this, this bathroom has been the highest, I mean, it's double of what some of our other bathrooms are from a janitorial standpoint. And this is our proposed new, new restroom. Again, this aligns with the 2018 park master plan for updating amenities. It is a Romtech build, the same company we went through with our 2021 Memorial Park restroom. So it's great, it's been great to work with them thus far. Just, we've built that communication. Now, it is on state contract with 50% eligible for reimbursement by the local grant, local government grant program. And we, we really do see a, foresee a reduction in maintenance moving forward. Since the Memorial Park bathroom went in, we've had no issues with new, new fixtures. And that increased utility room size will be a big win for our, for our parks team. And then lastly, the, the two all-gender ADA restrooms. Currently, there's a men's and women's where, say there's vandalism in the men's or women's side, and we need to get parts shipped in, we need to close down one side, and having two all-gender bathrooms is a big win for us, just aligns with the community and city vision. With that, I will pass over to Dustin to talk about the playground.
Yeah, thanks, Zach.
Can we ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, you absolutely can.
About the restroom before we move on?
Yep.
Are those single stall restrooms?
There is one.
So they're single stall, so they're one person locks the door?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then the other question I have is that you talked about the upgraded fixtures, what does that, what does that entail?
They're a lot better quality than they were.
Just, they're, they're newer and they're better quality? Okay, great, thank you.
I have one more question.
Yes.
I didn't really understand what you meant by state contract.
So, so there's a, there's a process in which, you know, companies such as Romtech, and you'll see Buell Burke in our playground presentation as well, are vetted through the state contracting process, and that results in the guaranteed lowest price on construction and goods through that process. So the, the vetting of the contract has already been done by the state agency, and we're just able to, to ride the coattails of that contract with our own stuff, and, and we feel really confident both with Romtech and Buell that we're getting really the best product out there for our community at the best price available because that work has already been done. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and if I recall, there was, that was significant savings over, if it had not been Romtech, correct? There are savings in...
Yeah, I think, I think in the Romtech proposal, it's something like 8%, state contract on, on the, the actual product itself, and then there's a cost not to exceed construction number that they can't go over in their construction process either. So they can't, you know, I think it's like $130 an hour or something is their state contract price, so they just can't come in and say, well, it's $200 an hour now. They're, they're stuck and set at that price, which really, as things have inflated a lot over the last few years, that, you know, two to three-year state contract has really helped us in, in some of these. Good? Yeah. So what, what else would you want to do with your new bathroom but go to a new playground? So we'll, we'll transition into the playground here. So the current playground at Boones Ferry is the oldest in our inventory, you know, it is 20, 26 years old. It's missing some pretty critical infrastructure. Under that EWF wood chip surfacing, there's no drain rock, there's no retainage, there's no drainage at all. So as you can imagine, in our, our climate, with no drain rock and no drainage, it's a real maintenance challenge for us to, to keep all of that dampness at bay and keep it safe for the kids. There are really no ADA or inclusion elements, and a lot of the playground is no longer supported. In the center there, you see a kind of a, a climbing structure that used to be a clatter bridge that we could no longer get parts for. We actually had shut that playground down for almost six months, two summers ago, trying to find a piece that they could retrofit into there. And there used to be a two to five structure that sat closer to Boones, to the Toshman House that was removed in 2020 as it was no longer safe to be played on. And that really has been the frequent closures, just because we've seen, you know, 26-year-old playground is just, there's just not a lot of support from the manufacturer anymore. And it also doesn't align with the master plan. The master plan would like that playground to be moved away from the Toshman House, and would like to see the Toshman House be utilized more as a wedding venue, smaller venue, in kind of, in connection with the, with the Steinbuser barn, you know, a larger venue and a smaller venue. So moving that noise concern away and building a little arboretum there is what the, what the master plan calls for. And so the proposed playground, where the team came from it with, with Buell Burke was really from a vision of universal design. So we were really looking for a playground that everyone in Wilsonville had something to do at, and it was something for everyone in a sense. We really wanted to pair inclusivity, accessibility, and usability in that universal design standard. So as you can see in the little graphic there, there's parallel play, which are, you know, both able-bodied and disabled individuals playing in close proximity to each other. There's integrated, which is they're playing in the same general area, and then there's universal design, which is everything is kind of seamlessly together and, and everyone is playing together all the time. And there's some really cool new inclusive pieces, we'll have two slides about the playground that we'll cover, and there's five really cool new inclusive pieces for Wilsonville that we're really excited about. It aligns with the master plan. The master plan calls for this large sprawling playground to be out over the river with geotechnical work that was done that really doesn't quite get to this. So we were able to go up, we were able to go with a pretty tall structure where we were just out there the other day, and when you would be up, you know, 20 feet in this, in this tower, before you head down the slide, you're going to get great views of the river and kind of the vista down there. I mean, it really blends that, what the master plan called for with the new insight that we have as a community around inclusivity and universal design. And again, to the, the state contract price, it's a, it's a Buell Burke build on state contract, and they've been really proactive with this project. I just got a call a few days ago that they're expecting a significant price increase, and they've driven really hard at this project to get it here today so that we didn't see that price increase if we brought this to you in January or February. So it's been a great process to get it to here. So here's the playground. I'll cover kind of 10 really cool inclusive things. There's a lot going on in this, so we'll probably end up back here when we get to the end of the presentation so you all can ask questions. But you'll see the stars pop up here. So this is the movement. The movement is kind of like that Simon game, if you ever played Simon, this was a while ago. But it's a really inclusive piece. They actually just had it today at the, at the ORPA trade show. It's a really, really cool, kids play with each other, against each other, high scores are captain, it's, it's available for all users of all abilities. Another one that was really important for us to get was the Rev eight. So that's a climbing spinner that, that fits up to 25 users. And when we've gone to playgrounds that have similar things, that is the busiest item you will see at the playground. It is collaborative kids play at the finest. It really brings all the kids together, which is awesome. And then this is the victory wall, American Ninja Warrior, but for your playground. This is a five to 12 play structure, but we really kind of see it being five to whenever you feel like you no longer want to try to run up this victory wall. So trying to bring, you know, not only our 12, 13, 14-year-olds, but, but even the adults in our community out to, to be a part of that playground experience. The turf itself is a really great inclusive amenity. We've had some users in wheelchairs come out and take us out to Marassi, which is a great ADA accessible playground, but as soon as you get into the wood chips, you have nowhere to go. You really are stuck. And so this is a true turf surfacing throughout the Blue River Meander, we're still working through, but that's really a nod to the master plan and kind of honoring the, the history of the river and bringing the river into the elements of the playground as well. You can't see it because it's right behind the star and it's small, but our new standard on every playground now is a dual-language welcome and warning sign, so English and Spanish. River Fox has it, Sophia will have it, and will have it here as well. So another really cool inclusion piece that we've been able to pull in. ADA integrated tables, that's an ADA table there. There's also some tables that you can't see underneath the five to 12 structure where users in mobility devices can wheel into the space, and it's not like, hey, the, the ADA seating area is over here outside of the space, it's actually right integrated into the play area. The, that star is on the five to, or the two to five structure, sorry. And one thing that's really cool about that structure is it has a roller slide. I'll talk a little bit more about that in the next slide, but kids with cochlear implants really love that one. The fence itself, the single most common call I get around inclusivity and universal design in our playgrounds is I have a son, daughter, grandchild, niece, nephew on the autism spectrum, and they love to run. Where can I take them in your park system that are, that are fenced and safe and they can go be free and I don't have to be a helicopter, you know, parent, grandparent, whatever that may be? This is a great opportunity for us to kind of implement that with the way the space works. Long-term, it will have a, an entrance that you can see there, and then a secondary one that'll come off of that trail that we're working on on the north side of Boones Ferry, but it'll really help with, with that inclusivity ask out of the community. And we're really fortunate, we worked pretty closely with Victory Academy outside of town on kind of looking over this design, and we actually went up there a few times and, you know, maybe took some ideas with their, their fence and kind of the way things are coordinated there as well. The accessible world, this is a truly accessible wheelchair-friendly roll-on, roll-off spinner. And then there is the, I'm going to drop link here, the connection swing they call it. So it's a swing where both the playground user and the guardian or parent or whoever that may be can swing together. They sit on two opposite swing levels and they both get that opportunity to swing together. So it's a, there's still tot swings where the little baby sits in the bucket, but this is a different version of that where they're looking at each other and swinging together. It's a really cool piece. And there's also an ADA swing in that swing base similar to Marassi. So these are the five that are really unique for us. We've got a lot of inclusive items going on. The ones that are really unique in Wilsonville are called out here. That roller slide, so kids with cochlear implants cannot go down traditional slides because it generates static electricity, which shorts out their cochlear implant. A roller slide is just metal dowels that go down the slide and they roll independently, which doesn't generate static electricity. So that's something that we do not have in our inventory, and we identified it as something that would be awesome to put in our, our new playground. The Rev eight, like I talked about, is a great opportunity for kids to come together and play as a group. That connection swing, you can see in the bottom left-hand corner there, a caregiver and a parkgoer experiencing that joy of swinging together. There's the accessible movement, which is that Simon-type game, you get a little bit better picture of it there. We had a couple teammates do it today at ORPA. When we get you all out there, it's, it's a workout for sure, you're kind of chasing the colors, and it's a really good time. And then the accessible world is one that we, we brought through some other community surveys, and it's gotten some good results, but it never quite rose to the top, and it was one we wanted to make sure we got in here because it really is that opportunity, that spinning movement feel for those who are particularly bound to that mobility device and can't transfer out. If they can transfer out, there's a lot of opportunities for them. If they can't, this is a great opportunity for them to have that joy. And then what's next? Tonight, you know, on, on resolution, there's, there's 3088, which is the Boones Ferry restroom, and there's 3089, which is the playground. And then you can see that both of these projects, Zach and I will really walk them together through Boones Ferry, or through the winter, sorry, and into the spring. We really... through the winter, sorry, and into the spring. We really do expect and are really optimistic that by June sometime, both of these will be done, completed, and open to the community. And we're excited to have you all out for an event to get them open. And we'll take any questions, and I can go back to any slides you'd like from now. And thank you for the opportunity to present.
So if you could go back a slide or two where it shows the entire playground. So how big of an area is that?
It's 150 feet long by 50 feet wide.
And if that was in terms of an acre, how big of an acre, or just roughly?
Yeah.
Oh, that's okay. I was just trying to compare it like to the dog park that we have.
What'd you say, 150 by what?
50.
35 by square feet.
Okay. And then I see like one bench, it looks like, over in the top left-hand side. Are there other benches for parents and grandparents?
There's six benches along, three on each side, and then there's the table and some other table. And then what we've seen with Marassi with that turf going in is a lot of parents just like to sit. The turf is warm, and they like to just throw a blanket out and sit on the turf. So we wanted to make sure we had a big enough user footprint outside of some of those use zones, that there's just spaces to sit within. And then the Boons Ferry master plan also caused for a shelter to be built alongside the playground in the future. So picture kind of how the shelter works in unison with Marassi's playground. That would be something that we would look to implement in the future.
Thank you.
It's a little less than a quarter acre lot.
Just super quick, I'm very excited that you're heading down this path. I have a good friend who has a child who's wheelchair-bound. So I think I asked about this on an earlier park request, and I'm really pleased that you have that spinner in there. And I know that all of these other children will appreciate this. I do have one quick question, though. The space seems somewhat hidden because it's at the end of Old Town, and I don't know if under, with the current park, if you're seeing much, a much lower attendance or use rate than you are at the other parks. With this new park, I would hope that Parks and Rec would have a plan to promote it, to get our citizens there with their families.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And that's a great point. With Boons Ferry, one of the things that we've always struggled with is that low use rate, because it is such an incredible amenity. But we have a 30-year-old bathroom and a 27-year-old playground and river access that's very challenging right now. And so what we're hoping to do is build the restroom, build the playground, and then start the study of the river access. So we just finished up our archaeological inventory of Boons Ferry, and so we're working through that and what that all means for the river. And then we would be able to start to really bring this park into that regional draw. And our social media team has been fantastic at promoting everything that we're doing, and this would be no exception.
Well, I just wanted to echo what Councilor Dunwell said and appreciate your excitement too about being able to put together, yeah, this, this like the launch of the Space Shuttle or something.
This is an awesome project. It's something that we, we get a lot of calls about kids in the community, whether that's in Wilsonville or the more regional community, that are missing that opportunity to play.
Right.
And for us to be able to provide that space for our community is something that we can't do it anywhere else, to Councilor Dunwell's point. You know, Marassi is kind of locked in its shell. Memorial Park can't get any bigger. We're not going to be able to purchase 15-acre parks anytime soon, so we really had one opportunity to get it right. This is our third rendering of this playground.
Well, it's really beautiful. And another thing I wanted to add is, in my work life, I work at a place that has a lot of families coming in, and colleagues that work directly with the children and families give some viewpoints into how important it is for that parent and grandparent who has a child with special needs to be able to enjoy this space. And being able to make that, you know, part of their day is going to work really well, and it's made just for them. And I love that it's just built, it's built around that.
Yeah.
And you are, you've really integrated that into the way you are just operating.
Oh, I appreciate that. It's a, it's a full team and...
Thanks to our Parks Department and our staff for supporting that. It's wonderful. Well done.
All right.
All right, well, enjoy.
Thank you.
You can have the rest of the day off. Okay. All right. With that, that concludes our work session, and we will adjourn the work session and reconvene at 7:10. It's just a little bit later than usual.
Good evening. I'll call to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council on Monday, November 6th at 7:12 PM. Will the city recorder please call the rule?
Counselor Berry.
President.
Counselor Linville.
Here.
Counselor President Oquival.
Here.
Counselor Dunwell.
Here.
Mayor Fitzgerald.
Here. Please join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counselor President Oquival, may I have a motion to approve the following order of agenda?
Yes, I move to approve the following order of agenda.
Second? Motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes 5-0. I'll now go into kind of a long mayor's business because there has been a lot going on. Some of you joined us at the Emergency Preparedness Fair that we just had the last Saturday of October. It was our second annual emergency preparedness fair and developing citizen, you know, awareness and tools to be ready for an emergency is one of our goals in our community. Lot of people attended. One of the main themes is "Wilsonville Ready." It's a campaign with a year-round public education effort, and I appreciate all the city staff and people from the county, Toowleton Valley Fire and Rescue, and other agencies there to help people do what they can and begin to work with their families and neighbors to become better equipped to prepare for the aftermath of an emergency. And we had activities that helped people prepare for critical supplies for themselves, their pets, even their neighbors, and think about power, water, and food, internet, and transportation. So we will continue to have awareness about that and education opportunities throughout the year. One big thing that has gotten some traction lately, no pun intended, though, is our West Commuter Rail Extension Project. The city of Wilsonville was very pleased to have Senator Aaron Woods working with us recently to build, begin to build capacity for extending the West commuter train from Wilsonville all the way to Salem, and that was really how it was originally intended. And if we have all of the cities along the way who are interested in this, Senator Woods of Wilsonville and Representative Kevin Mannix of Kaiser are intending to introduce a bill in the 2024 legislative session to study how this would work, how it would be funded, and how the different cities could work together to make this a potential reality. And I know Counselor Dunwell attended a meeting about this recently, and I think you'll probably share about that later in the meeting, but this is one of the tools that Wilsonville and many other cities think can really add to the incredible need to reduce congestion on I-5. For, you know, it's very important for commuters. We have an increasing number of people who work in Woodburn, work in Wilsonville, and so forth, and live other areas. So you'll hear more about that coming up from Counselor Dunwell. One of our newest, biggest employers in Wilsonville is called Twist Bioscience. They are located at the former Xerox campus, and I had the opportunity to attend and present a welcome speech at Twist Bioscience for the Oregon Biotech Summit, and it was a really great event. They were, they actually were extolling the virtues of Wilsonville themselves, talking about the great housing opportunities that we have, and they appreciated our Wilsonville Investment Now tool to attract high-tech, high-tech wages to Wilsonville, which is one of the reasons they located here. But the Twist Bioscience is on the original site of Techtronics, and so here it is 50 years after that was built, and we now have 250 new well-paid jobs in manufacturing, research, and development at that site. Part of the day, what they did is they had something like a shark tank opportunity for young PhD students presenting really exciting and almost impossible-to-understand ideas, and those that had the best ideas won scholarships. So we were, I was glad to be able to see how well Twist Bioscience is doing. Another big thing that all of us participated in on the council this week was the 35th anniversary of the Kitakata-Japan and Wilsonville Sister City Association's relationship. This is the 35th year of this sister-city relationship with this city in Japan, and this week we had 13 students ages 12 to 15 and two adults visiting with them. All of these students and chaperone adults stayed with host families. I had the great opportunity to host the head of the Izu-Kitakata International Association, Ms. Magumi Dote, who also served as one of the chaperones for the 13 students, and we had a great visit. We were, the group was led by, delegation leader was a man named Mr. Kenai Urio, and he's the retired chair of the Izu-Kitakata Chamber of Commerce and Industry. And they all did a lot of things around the Wilsonville area and beyond. I was glad to have the opportunity with some of the members of our Wilsonville Sister City Committee and Mr. Urio about the beginnings of a strategic planning effort that they are going to do that, looking for a study trip that some businesspeople in Kitakata want to undertake to come to Wilsonville and Oregon in the future. But while they were here, they visited the schools, they took a number of day trips around the region, went to local farms, wineries, business, the historical society, and the state park. In this Kitakata region, they're famous for their lacquerware, which we have right here, and it's a, it's really a kind of like a county area with a number of small towns in Kitakata City, and they presented this Wilson, the city of Wilsonville with two of these little sculpture animals here. They're called a "Baitu," and they represent good health, so they wished that none of us will be subjected to an epidemic like, like we have been ever again in the future. So we totally agreed with that. And we also had a visit to the Japanese consul office in Portland and learned a lot, a lot more about the association between Oregon and Japan, and that Wilsonville schools and Westland schools are some of the longest-running, they have the longest, some of the longest-running Japanese language programs in the state. So I wanted to thank all the members of our sister-city, Kitakata Sister City Board who participated in planning for this, and also our Parks and Recreation Staff member, Brian Stevenson, and also Erica Baylor, who really led this whole program and did a great job. Also note that members of the city council will plan to visit Kitakata next year as part of this 35th anniversary Sister City celebration. Upcoming meetings, on November 8th, there is a Planning Commission Community Conversation underway, and it is, the topic is Housing Our Future: Community Conversation on Cost Burden, and that's the cost burden of housing. One of the missions of our Planning Commission is to interact with the community, get their feedback, and know what people are thinking about barriers to affordable housing and ideas for actions that Wilsonville can consider to reduce these barriers. You know, some of the things that Wilsonville has done, starting many years ago, was to allow accessory dwelling units to be built. We've modified our code to allow that, and we do have some other denser middle housing options that are making some headway in this area. We're also planning on an affordable transit-oriented housing complex at the Wilsonville Transit Center, and it is not ready for groundbreaking, but there's lots of good planning underway. So I encourage people to go to the community planning session on November 8th, and there's information on the city's website. Coming up on Veterans Day, November 11th, I'd like to announce that the Korean War Veterans Association Oregon Trail Chapter in partnership with Wilsonville Parks and Recreation is sponsoring a Veterans Day remembrance ceremony on Saturday, November 11th, at Town Center Park. It starts at 10:30 AM at the Oregon Korean War Memorial. Commander Larry Edwards of American Legion Post 65 in Wilsonville, who's a friend of mine and a 90-year-old Korean War veteran, will be there to say a few words, and I look forward to being there as well, and I think we'll have some of our other counselors joining me. We will be placing wreaths of honor, and they will present the colors and play taps, and they have planned for a flyover by the West Coast Ravens. On Friday, November 10th, in observance of Veterans Day, we just want to note that our smart buses will continue to operate, but the city facilities will be closed. Couple of more items I have is, one is about another open house, and people may have gotten this mailing about it. It's on November 16th. Oregon Department of Transportation is hosting an open house here at City Hall on the I-5 Boone Bridge Project. So as we've all said many times, improving the flow of traffic on I-5, which is under the control of the state, the ODOT, is one of our top priorities, and we hear about it from our residents and people coming through. We hear it from our friends and neighbors all the time. So we're glad that ODOT is hosting this open house here. They are seeking community input on the preferred bike-ped crossing over the Willamette River. So I encourage you to go to that. Two other items I wanted to bring up, as people may have read about the Rite Aid Distribution Center closing. The city was notified that Rite Aid will close the Wilsonville Distribution Center, which has been here for many years, and it will, that's a total of 136 full-time jobs. So we had known about this for some time. I appreciate the staff, Economic Development Manager Matt Lorenzen taking some proactive action on this. The announcement came immediately after Rite Aid filed for Chapter 11 bankruptcy due to declining sales and lawsuits over opioid distribution. So when the city was notified, we immediately escalated to Clackamas Community College Workforce Services, and they are our partner in this area that is responsible for rapid-response services to employees subject to layoffs. I appreciated that Rite Aid, it may be a requirement, but we, I got a letter immediately saying that these jobs were going to be eliminated in our community, and I really appreciate the staff following up. And we have found that many supports are being put in place for the laid-off employees, both by the community college and by Rite Aid. As you might know, it was formerly known as Thrifty Pay Less Drugs, and it's one of Wilsonville's oldest corporate entities. They have a 500,000-square-foot warehouse. It was built here 42 years ago. We do not have any word about what is the plan for remaining, keeping the Rite Aid store in Wilsonville open or not. That has not been shared with us. But during the years of operation of the Rite Aid Distribution Center, they did a lot of community activities that people may remember, including a large annual plant sale that benefited Dornbecker Children's Hospital. So we, we just, this is another time to just focus on how much we, you know, I'm glad that we do focus on family wage jobs and looking for ways for those employees to find other opportunities, hopefully locally. Tomorrow is Election Day, and I would encourage all voters to support Measure 3604 that renews a local option levy for the Westland-Wilsonville School District. It's a five-year levy, and it replaces the expiring one, seeks only to maintain the current tax rate. It does not increase our current tax rate. The city of Wilsonville has, has had a long tradition of partnering with our schools, and we hear from people all the time that one of the reasons they live here and want to build their businesses here and keep their businesses here is because of our schools. I do have a proclamation. I'd like to note that the city, in the city council packet, is a proclamation for National American Indian Heritage Month, and I am going to read this. I think it's very, you know, our council supports this, and I'm proud to be able to read it. "Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, and whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designated the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month, and whereas in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities, have been planned. Now therefore, I Julie Fitzgerald, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Wilsonville, do hereby proclaim November as the National American Indian Heritage Month in Wilsonville, and urge all of our citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. In witness thereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Wilsonville to be affixed this 6th day of November 2023." Our next city council meeting is going to be in December. I don't have that date right here. December 4th, will be December 4th. We are not having a second meeting in November due to the proximity of the Thanksgiving holiday. Oh, here it is, right here. December 4th at 7:00 PM is the next meeting. That brings us to our Citizen Input and Community Announcement section.
Mayor, I think you have one, one item under Communications.
Oh, sorry, I've got two different sheets here. Let me back up. I'm not ready for that at all yet. I'm ready for the Communication section, and we have the Metro Coffee Creek Wetland Project. Presented by... And Metro. Presentation by our city of Wilsonville staff, Metro colleagues, and the Coffee Creek Wetland Project.
Thank you, Mayor, Council President, councilors. For the record, I'm John Blasher. You see him, his pronouns. I'm the Parks and Nature Director for Metro, and I'm very happy to be here this evening and present a little bit about this project that we have, and want to thank your park staff and all of your staff for being great partners in this. As you know, Metro as a regional government plays many different roles, from solid waste, land use, transportation planning, arts and culture venues, and also a large portfolio in parks and nature. Our department started in the early 90s with the Green Space Master Plan, really looking at opportunities to protect water quality, enhance fish and wildlife, and create opportunities for access to nature close to home through a connected system of parks, trails, and natural areas. Over the last couple decades, voters have supported three different bond measures to help with us, to allow us to do some acquisition of large-scale habitat to help protect water quality and fish and wildlife habitat. Voters have also supported operating levies. We've had three operating levies to go and take some of those habitat opportunities and places and do restoration projects to really create healthy ecosystems. All of this operates through well-thought-out spaces that we want to make sure that everyone can connect to, and we also provide spaces to do nature parks, like Graham Oaks Nature Park. We're pleased to participate in some collaboration with you all there. And not only do we do large-scale habitat restoration and acquisition and nature parks, we also provide grants and funding through local share projects. I believe you all were mentioning the Frog Pond acquisition and some collaboration there. So as a department, we really appreciate connecting with all of your jurisdictions and really excited to speak specifically about one of the great ways that we've used some of those bond dollars through willing seller program and putting together a multi-decade plan. Once you have enough of these habitat, excuse me, these sites connected where we can do large-scale restoration. And so we're really excited to talk about this project, which helps with not only creating great ecosystems, but climate resilience and opportunities for clean water and great places to be and enjoy. So what you'll hear here now is the culmination of some work between Metro, Wetlands Conservancy, and Wilsonville for many years. And here today to join me to talk a little bit more about the specifics of this project that'll help make great benefits for humans and non-humans alike is our senior scientist from the Parks and Nature Department, Andrea Berkley, who's going to walk us through a presentation.
Thank you, John. I'm Andrea Berkley. I'm a senior scientist at Metro Parks and Nature, and I use she/her pronouns, and I wanted to introduce also the lead engineer for our project, A.J. Jones, with Wolf Water Resources. She's here in case there are any technical questions. So I wanted to thank you for having us here today to share about this project, and I also wanted to thank and recognize and appreciate the work of Dustin Schull and Carrie Rappold, who are city staff who have collaborated with Metro over the past several years to help develop this project. So to orient everyone, hopefully you can see this map. The project site's located in the center of the map, shaded in blue. It's at the south end of a series of properties owned by Metro, totaling about 350 acres and consisting of a lot of wetlands, creeks, and oak woodlands. And in this corridor, Metro and partners, including the city of Wilsonville, the Trust for Public Land, the Wetlands Conservancy, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, have conserved land throughout this corridor, reaching from the Toowleton River in the north to the Willamette River in the south. This corridor is important for conservation focus because it forms a wildlife movement corridor used by wildlife and fish, and these types of corridors are especially important as these species are attempting to adapt to stressors from climate change, so they can use these movement corridors to find the resources they need to survive. It's also an important corridor when we're thinking about water quality, as many of the waterways in this area pass through this corridor and eventually pass through the city of Wilsonville and reach the Willamette River, and also thinking about protecting local communities from flooding. There's a lot of low-lying areas in this corridor, so we can think about flood control. Zooming in a little, this is the project site outlined in yellow, and we have about a 64-acre site bordered by Beckman Road on the north and Barber Street on the south, with some city properties adjoining and the community of Villeboise on the west. So running through the middle of the site, you can see a line, and that is a large drainage ditch, which is the straightened and deepened Coffee Lake Creek. which is the straightened and deepened Coffee Lake Creek. And it, this ditch efficiently drains water off the site and moves it downstream. And this ditch facilitated a long period of farming on this property. This is a photo of the ditch in the summertime. The property is composed of peat soils, which are thick, spongy organic soils that form from decomposition of organic matter over long periods of time. And these formed prior to the draining of the site. And once drained and dry, peat soils actually can contribute carbon to the atmosphere. And so that's the situation at the site right now. They have been drained, and they're very dry compared to historic conditions. But when wet and vegetated, which is one of the goals of our project, the soils can actually capture carbon from the atmosphere and hold it on-site long-term. This is another photo of the ditch in the wintertime. And you can see that even during high creek levels, the creek is not able to exit the ditch and interact with the floodplain or the wetlands. And this means that the wetland does not function like a wetland. So we don't get any of those ecosystem services, such as filtering stormwater pollutants, percolating water into groundwater where it can be cooled and cleaned. And this obviously has impacts on water quality within the city and downstream for the Willamette River. And in this drained condition, the site is also not able to support wetland birds, amphibians, turtles, fish, or insect communities. And so a whole series of food chains is disrupted from this draining condition. This is a photo of A.J. wading through Reed Canary Grass, which is an invasive grass that has become established across the site. And you can see in this image that the grass is very thick and hard to move through. So it forms thick mats. It sucks up a lot of water as it grows, and it really provides poor habitat for wildlife or birds. And it also increases fire risk at the site. And historically, the site would have supported a range of wetland species from trees to shrubs to sedges, rushes, flowers. But now the site is dominated by this one species of invasive grass and quite a bit of blackberry as well. So as part of early restoration work, Metro has begun site preparation to reduce the abundance of Reed Canary Grass and blackberry in preparation for future planting. And this photo shows some of that work underway and also some signage we've placed to let folks know why there are changes happening at the site and provide contact information if they have questions. And this is another view of the site from about a month ago with site preparation underway. And you can see some nice, much less Reed Canary Grass growing and some nice water pooling on the wetlands. So this image shows our current restoration design for the project we're planning to construct next summer. And I won't go deeply into this design, but I'm happy to discuss this with any of you in the future if you have additional questions. But there are two main things we'll be doing at the site. Number one, we'll be reshaping the creek and the wetlands through excavation. And the second major action is doing extensive native seeding and planting. The purpose of this is to improve habitat quality for a range of species and improve the groundwater infiltration function, our flood storage, to re-wet the peat soils and improve our ability to accept stormwater on the site and filter out the pollutants in that stormwater before water moves downstream to the Willamette River. The work will also, we think, beautify the site. There's going to be a lot more interesting things to look at out there than there currently is and hopefully add scenic value for the community. And we recognize this is a highly visible site with raised roadways and bridges and the ISH Tonquin Trail and Tivoli Park, all having a beautiful view of the site. So the work itself will include scraping the Reed Canary Grass mats, creating wetland pools and swales, which are shown in blue in this image, installing habitat wood features, and the seeding and planting work across 64 acres. The project has been designed to ensure positive southward drainage. And so we're not intending to hold all the water we can accept onto the site. There'll still be positive drainage moving south to ensure proper functioning of stormwater infrastructure that feeds into the site. And that's been an important discussion we've had with city staff of how to make sure we're not inadvertently altering the way the stormwater infrastructure works. And then improving on the wildlife under crossings that the city has built under Beckman Road and Kinsman Road. And we're also designing the planting work to retain views at overlooks that are around the site perimeter. This is our project timeline. So we're currently at 60% design stage, and we're working towards getting our permits submitted. We've had one letter sent out to neighbors in the community, and we'll have additional, at least one additional letter in the future and some news stories. We'll be continuing site preparation for vegetation next spring and then going to construction next summer with a long period of the planting, seeding, and plant maintenance after that. And then in the end, we'll have 64 acres of high-quality wetlands that are functioning as wetlands should and improving both habitat and watershed health. These images are from Jackson Bottom Wetlands, and they give kind of a visual sense of what we think Coffee Lake Creek Wetlands will look like in the future. We welcome the opportunity to host a tour for Mayor Fitzgerald or any of the councilors who are interested to learn more about the project. And I would be happy to take any questions or comments.
I have a couple of questions. The, I've spent a lot of time at the Tuolton Wildlife Refuge. And would you see that when it's completed and completely restored, that you would see the bird migrations move into this area similar to where they are at the Wildlife Refuge in Tuolton?
That's an excellent question. We do expect to see an increase in the diversity of species and the number of bird, waterfowl specifically, using the site because we'll have water standing on the site more than it is currently. So I'd say yes. I don't know if we'll ever support as many as the Tuolton Refuge does, but we'll definitely be along that flyway and supporting the same populations.
So now I'm going to ask one more question, and that's going a little further north and west of the current area that's in restoration. And I saw Metro owns, Metro is responsible for most of that. Especially for the mammals rather than the birds. The, maybe more than the mammals, actually. Graham's Ferry Road, we call that Suicide Road for the wildlife because they have to cross. Even though we did all that great work on Beckman, on Tuesday to allow, and Beckman to allow for the passing and the crossing for the wildlife, we still have that problem at Graham's Ferry. Are you also in control of that at Metro?
I don't know who manages that roadway. Is it the county?
Yeah, it is the county, but is, there's no, there are no discussions about that because I love all the great work that's already happened, but yet there is such an issue because you'll see, you'll see skunks and you'll see all sorts of animals and deer even that are, they're hit by cars because they're trying to cross because they see that wetland as a migratory or a space that they live, so.
This is a different wetland.
It is, it is, it's not part of the same wetland. But it starts all the way up at the refuge, correct? And goes all the way down to the Willamette, even though I know that's not what we're specifically talking about today. If I look at the map.
Yeah, there's one spot on Graham's Ferry that Metro owns both sides of the road. I'm not aware of any discussions on improving wildlife passage. Are you, John?
I'm not familiar with that, any conversations, but would be happy to look into it.
That'd be great. I'm very interested in that because I see the possibilities, particularly once this is restored. Not that that would be inexpensive, but yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you. I have a question on the interpretive signage that's around that Coffee Creek Wetland and also, same topic, in Graham Oaks Park. Can you tell me about the schedule of replacing some of those signs in the Graham Oaks Park?
That's a great question, Mayor. I don't have that answer right now, but I'll definitely go back and look at that. Graham Oaks is one of those nature parks that we're planning to put a lot of investment in through the bonds, mostly focused on some of the accessibility and ADA. And so I know that we've got some people from our planning team that have been really looking at signage.
Well, we've got some really nice success signs. There's one that's very readable and beautiful about the Missoula floods at the, one of the openings of the trails, right, coming out of Villeboise. So I just want to compliment Metro on that and say that some of the signs just didn't, they're gone. There's nothing there to see. So we'd love to see those replaced.
Thank you for that information. I'll make sure to bring that back to the team.
And we have so much usage at Graham Oaks Park. I really want to thank Metro for keeping it up and very, and also pedestrian activity all around this Coffee Creek Wetlands. So I don't, and Counsel Barry.
Just a quick, thank you for doing your presentation. Having healthy wetlands is so important. And to see this work was really important to me. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Barry. Go ahead.
I just had a question about the Canary Grass. And I know that's, well, I've heard that that's a difficult thing to remove. And so I wondered if you could give some more detail on that. I'm curious, when did it arrive? When did it pop up in this site specifically? And then once, you know, some of that, once it is removed, will this be a reoccurring thing to try to get rid of the Canary Grass? Or will the new modifications to the site be something that would eliminate that concern or risk? I was hoping you could give some more information on that.
That's an excellent question. It is a challenging grass to control. But luckily, the two methods we've found success with that will both be utilized at this site are flooding. And so if you have water standing on growing Reed Canary Grass during its early growing season at the right depth, you can suppress its growth. So that gives other plants that you've established there a competitive advantage to get taller and shade it out. And then the other strategy is shading it out with woody plantings. And so we'll be doing both of those things at this site. So we don't expect, long-term, that we'll be having to repeatedly work on Reed Canary Grass. However, it is always going to be part of this corridor and I think the Pacific Northwest because it's so widespread. So there'll be small amounts of it here and there. As far as when it got here, I've heard different stories about how it got to this part of the world. I believe most people think it was brought in as a pasture grass for forage, but I couldn't tell you more.
So has it always been on this piece of land?
No, I don't think so. I would imagine when the site was farmed, it was not a major component.
But in its more recent history? I'm trying to remember. I've lived close to the site for 13 years now, I guess, you know? But I'm trying to remember what it looked like 13 years ago because it does seem that there has been some change over time to that space. And it'll be good to anticipate a new season for that area as well.
I mean, I don't know exactly when that ditch was created, but I anticipate, you know, between that time period, that's when the hydrology for the site was manipulated. So it was no longer an active wetland. And the, you know, the history there is, I'm not entirely sure on, but the indication of the peat soils and some, you know, historical photographs indicate that it was wet, it was flooded. It was naturally and historically a wetland. And so it would have had a lot more wetland biology and plants at that time. And then the manipulations through the ditching and then agriculture kind of changed all that. So kind of trying to put it back to that historic state.
I really appreciate the letter that was sent out to community nearby. And I think that that continual education, public education, is going to be important because there may be some people that will see more standing water and feel concerned that there's standing water, right? And so the more that we can collectively tell that story about what's happening on that site will be a really positive thing. So thank you.
I have a more general question. So given that you're Metro and given that there are so many priorities in the Metro region on parks and things, how did you, what was the process? And I'm very pleased that you're doing it. But what was the process for making this wetland a priority? And how long was it in the works?
Great question. Should we have Jonathan into that?
Yeah, we could bring up our senior science manager, Jonathan Saul, to talk a little bit more about the strategy. But in general, part of our role and our process is to acquire a number of properties till we get to a large enough size of habitat where we feel like we can do major restoration projects rather than having maybe a few acres here and there, really trying to work to having something larger. So just recently, there was a final acquisition on the site which helped to unlock more of the opportunities for us to do this. So this is something that's been in the works for probably a couple decades of slowly piecing through a Willing Cellar program to piece together the properties till you have a larger contiguous site, which you can then do much more restoration. And you see from this map up here on the screen, too, that you're able to build a whole lot more. So that's part of it, is being able to have large enough areas to feel like we can make these larger investments. But in terms of a broader priority, Jonathan, do you want to add anything?
You did a really good job.
Yes. Anytime your science manager says he did a pretty good job, I'll take that.
Great.
I could add that this general, the Coffee Lake Creek drainage.
We kind of need to have this on the record. So if you want to come up to this microphone right here.
Right, yeah.
Say your name.
Yeah. Meeting, yeah. Hello, Mayor and Counselors. So Jonathan Saul, Science Manager at Metro Parks and Nature. So this general geography was identified really back in the 1980s when the kind of effort to look ahead and make nature a part of our nature conservation, a part of our region moving forward, really gathered steam. So really going back 40 years, conservation practitioners have been working on this region, the formation of the National Wildlife Refuge at the north end of it. And Metro's Trust for Public Land and the Wetland Conservancy and your own city has been investing in land protection in this corridor then throughout that time. And as John correctly said, it was only with the acquisition of property from the Young family several years ago that we had a contiguous enough area that we could begin to reestablish the natural hydrology of the wetlands without impacting other landowners, which we generally try and avoid doing. So hopefully that answers your question.
Well, we feel very fortunate that we live adjacent to this. I think all of us as citizens benefit, so we appreciate your investment in it, too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for coming to Wilsonville. And maybe you can come back another day during the daytime, and we can stroll around that perimeter.
That'd be great.
We'd like to do that.
Love to do a tour.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So now we are to our community input and community announcements section of our agenda. And this is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. It's also a time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff and city council will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizen input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter if we need to get additional information. We ask everybody who's speaking to limit their comments to three minutes. We do have a couple of speaker cards. Do I just have two? Okay. The first one is from, I have it right here.
Do you have them both?
Yeah. The first one is from John Vandenberg. Is he on Zoom?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counselors, and thank you for your service. I believe you have my address on the speaker card?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. So in regard to Resolution Number 3092, I reviewed the statement of work for the award to the Century West Engineering, sort of a road consultation project. And I noticed there was nothing in there, to me, that spoke to climate change, nothing about considering alternative pavements, so-called cool pavements, nothing about tree canopy or other issues that might affect climate change. And the city attorney, in response to a written question I had on that, wrote a very helpful, very clear, excellent email to me in part mentioning the city's climate inventory and gap analysis considerations. So two related questions. One, whether it's possible for the city to accelerate its consideration of that analysis to put even more sense of urgency on that. And then second, related, is, are there opportunities for the council and the city as a whole to sort of increase consideration of climate change issues and expanding it to like every issue you consider? So if you're doing a project on road consultation, accelerating and moving forward, consideration. consideration of urban heat zones and anything to do with climate related, just sort of push it even further toward the front burner. So those are my questions. And again, thank you for your service.
Well, thank you, John. It's good to have you bring that up again. And we do have, in our council goals, that we voted unanimously to continue to do the gap analysis. An example of how this comes into things, even in today's meeting, we spent quite a bit of time talking about our stormwater management. We were talking about how to manage the, you know, the planning for new housing areas so that we, and we have work to do. How do we balance the need to keep some affordable housing available for people while also managing stormwater and keeping tree canopy and shade? And it's hard to do all of those things in a particular geographic area. And you might have heard some of the plans for the Frog Pond, which would include more unpaved areas and alleys. So we're continuing to work on that. And in some cases, we actually need to find outside funding to take it to a greater level. So thank you. We now have another speaker card. And this is from, and I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing this right, but Nofal Kasrawi. And if you'd like to come to, in one of the chairs or the podium, please. And I have your address on file in Wilsonville.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'm here on behalf of 124 petitioners from Charbonneau related to upgrade and repair of the walking path along French Prairie. I have a short statement related to that to talk about before I submit the petition to you. I'm also 87 years old. It's relevant to the subject I'm going to talk about. And a retired architect and a city planner. I'm here to represent to the council a petition signed by 124 residents of Charbonneau community requesting the repair and upgrade of the pedestrian path parallel to the French Prairie Drive. This issue was previously addressed as part of the consolidation improvement plan drafted by yourself in August 2014. At that time, the council opted to do a short-term repair. The short-term repair is not working now. Today, the path is not safe for walking according to more than all the users that we canvassed and signed the petition. A few of the elderly users have taken fall in the past year, some requiring hospitalization. Ms. Mansubi, one of those, last year fell down, broke three ribs, and stayed, you know, recovered in about six weeks, including expenses at the hospital. We, as a group, prospectively request that the council consider the implementation of Option 1 in the Charbonneau Consolidated Improvement Plan, specifically a LICO, replace existing asphalt paths in its current location with a five-foot sidewalk in conformance with the current Wilsonville Public Work Standards and ADA Guidelines. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming to talk to us about this today. And as I said in the opening, in some cases, we have to go back and get other information. I'm not prepared for this at this moment. Mr. Cosgrove, do you have anything to add?
Well, I had a discussion last week with Dolora Kerber about doing some emergency repairs out there for some areas that we know. As you're no doubt aware, the long-term solution is going to be very expensive. There's other alternatives that we've talked about, including taking one of the travel lanes and basically just reducing it to one side for traffic. So there's options. I think it's a much larger discussion, more complicated. So I think we're going to have to come back to you with a more fulsome report. But I will tell you that we, I did authorize Ms. Kerber to begin some emergency repairs. The complicating factor is, to do a full repair, you have to remove tree roots. And if you remove tree roots, you will, there's a high likelihood, we've been told by arborists, that you will damage the tree. So I think where we're at right now is that we're just going to have to remove some of the damaged asphalt and just go over the top of it without damaging the tree roots. So I think you deserve a more fulsome report, and I think the Charbonneau folks deserve that as well. So let me work with staff. We'll bring, probably not until after the new year, because there's a lot of different plans involved and different budgets that we need to look at. So we'll come back to you.
Thank you very much.
And we will make sure that we're communicating with the Charbonneau folks as well.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that.
May I present the petition, ma'am?
Yes, I'll take that, sir.
Okay, so that will go in our record, and we will all have a copy of it. Thank you, everyone, for coming to the council. We appreciate that. And now, we come to, that brings us to our next section, which is Counselor Comments, Liaison Reports, and Meeting Announcements, starting with Council President Ockerball.
Thank you. Since our last council meeting, I was happy to be able to attend a few of the events that we had where we could interact with the delegation that was here from Kitakata and appreciate that ongoing relationship that we have and just the point of reflection about the many, many people that have been affected. The host families over 35 years, the students that have come to the U.S. and the students that have gone to Japan over 35 years. It's quite a group now. That's a numerous, that's a big group of people.
I think they said 400 students have come from Kitakata. And that doesn't count all the host families.
Yeah, yeah, which is, it's substantial when you think about that. So a big thank you to staff for all of their work with the activities and the visit this year. Thank you to the host families. Thank you to the students and the adults that came. It was a special thing and something that I think is important that we continue. This Wednesday, I will be going with Ms. Monbert to Lowry Primary to give a presentation to the second grade about local governments, specifically in Wilsonville, our form of government, and how they have an important role as members of the public to interact and how we all need to work together to function at our best. The public, elected leaders, and staff. We are, hopefully, a triad of greatness. So we will talk about that with the second graders at Lowry Primary. And next week, actually, there's a number of things that are kind of partnering with our school district. I look forward to attending the ribbon cutting for the Wilsonville High School New Performing Arts Center. And that's this next Monday night, I believe. It is at 7:00. Thank you. So that's a terrific amenity. And look forward to seeing that and getting a tour of the space, led by some of the students, I believe. And one other thing that I wanted to mention, also kind of in relationship with the school district, is that they are currently looking for community mentors. And this kind of dovetails with one of our council goals about workforce preparation and partnership with the different entities that attend to that within Wilsonville. And so, of course, in some ways, that includes the city and it includes the schools and it includes our local businesses. And in this instance, they are looking for members of our community and businesses within our community that could help participate in their career and technical education CTE classes. And they have a form currently on the Westland Wilsonville website that interested parties, so that would be Wilsonville professionals and businesses could go and fill out. They're looking for people that could talk about their career path, that could give a kind of a tour of a site, allow somebody to job shadow for a short period of time, or do more in-depth work, like mentoring or hosting an internship or something like that. So they're looking specifically for professionals in many different areas, including animation, architecture, business, computer science, construction, graphic design, engineering technology, environmental science, forestry, health occupations, journalism, photography, technical theater, I believe. I mean, so I think that covers a lot. So I hope that people in our community will consider that because it really does take everyone working together to be very fruitful in that area. So I wanted to mention that and help get the word out. And I think that is it for me for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to do a little update and report on our shred day that was conducted on October 28th, which was the last weekend in October here at City Hall. Our residents dropped off nearly 13,000 pounds of paper documents to be shredded on-site. And they donated $3,300 in cash and checks and $275 in gift cards to Wilsonville Community Sharing, the city's food bank affiliate, or the Oregon Food Bank Affiliated Outlet and Social Service Referral Agency. So a very, very successful day. I always look forward to that myself and save my things up so that I can bring them out. My time since our last meeting has been, I've had several meetings. On November the 1st, I attended the, by Zoom, the Opioid Settlement Prevention, Treatment, and Recovery Board. And at that meeting, we were able to settle on and approve the goals, the goal areas and strategies that were identified for under each of those goals. So I think we're moving really ahead and starting to look at. Next, we'll be looking at what will be the process for either deciding that they will be competitive. All competitive grants that will be given out will be the application process. Or will there be some that will be non-competitive and some that will be competitive? So it's getting down to what will be the priorities. And I'm excited about that. It'll be after the 1st of the year before I think we get into actually getting applications. I attended the Oregon Department of Aviation Work Session on November the 2nd. There was a little bit of discussion about the Aurora Airport, but not anything that was really significant in that work session. I also attended the Kitakata farewell dinner and, as all of the council did. And one of the things that really impressed me, because I've worked with Japanese exchange students at the college level, and so seeing these 13, 14, 15-year-old kids was really great. And what really, really, though, impressed me was the connections that those students made with their host family students. And there were emotions that were overwhelming. I mean, there were lots of tears and, you know, so really wonderful relationships that were developed over that week, which is, I mean, that's the beauty of it, even more than seeing Silver Falls State Park, I think. I will be attending three events in addition to the Boone Bridge Open House and the High School Auditorium Dedication. On November the 8th, which is this week, the city manager and our city attorney and I will be gathering interested community folks to talk about, to start the work of talking about how we might use our local fentanyl awareness, our fentanyl settlement monies. And so there should be representatives there from our Wilsonville Police Department, the Wilsonville, the Westland Wilsonville School District, Community Sharing, and Heart of the City. So we'll begin, I don't imagine we'll get finished at that one first meeting, but I'm glad we're going to start that process. On November the 9th in Charbonneau, 1:00, there is going to be a tolling forum that is going to be hosted by the Clackamas County Commissioners West and Savis. And hopefully, it's going to be a listening session. I'm sure they have plenty to say about opinions about tolling and what the impact is. But I think our citizens do as well. And so it'll be a great opportunity to have them speak with our county commissioners. And then, on the 14th, I will be attending the Clackamas County Business Alliance Presentation on the Fentanyl Crisis. And I think that that should be very good. There's also going to be, and I don't have the date in front of me right now, but there is a Zoom presentation on the fentanyl crisis in our veterans. And I think that's going to be a pretty informative session as well. I seem to be narrowing in on an area of representation that is like eating the elephant all, you know, one bite at a time. So, but I'm happy to do it.
Thank you. So it seems like my calendar's also been filled. A lot of it has to do with meeting with other Clackamas County cities. And I, on Wednesday, October 18th, I attended the C4, the Clackamas County Subcommittee meeting. On Thursday, October 26th, I attended the Clackamas City's Dinner in Gladstone. The mayor was also there. October 24th, I got to attend the breakfast for the Japanese students. And that was really impressive. I also got to attend the farewell dinner on Saturday. It was nice to see the coming and the going. And I was also really impressed with that, that there was a comment that it's not just that the students come and visit us and that we get to go visit them. But over the years, some Japanese people have settled here in Oregon and some of the Oregonians that have participated are now living in Japan. And I just really love that we're able to build those bonds and, you know, educate and do cultural exchanges and build the economic exchange. So that was really, really fun for me. On Thursday, November 2nd, I attended the C4, Clackamas County C4 meeting. And the county did, the staff did a presentation on housing and homelessness issues. The Subcommittee's going to meet on December 13th in Twallington to hear about transportation studies, the Special Subcommittee on Transportation Fund, the SSTP. Upcoming on this Wednesday is the Housing Our Futures Community Conversation on Cost Burdens that I'm planning on attending. And then the Tourism Promotion Committee's meeting on Thursday that I'll attend. And I'm looking forward to attending the dedication for the High School Performance Arts Building on the 13th. And then C4 Subcommittee the following on the November 15th. And the ODOT Open House I'm planning to attend. So it's like a busy calendar. It's all good. Oh, I also want to make an announcement that the Cities Park and Recreation Department Oh, I also want to make an announcement that the Cities Park and Recreation Department is hosting our annual toy drive now through, or December 8th. And they're accepting new unwrapped toys that are going to be donated to Clackamas County Compassion in Action to distribute to local families in need. You can drop off your unwrapped toys at the Wilsonville Community Center, located at 7965 Southwest Wilsonville Road. And donations are being accepted on weekdays from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. That's it. Thank you.
Hello. Couple of things. I, on the 25th of October, I attended the Willamette Valley Commuter Rail convening session that you mentioned a bit earlier. And a couple of really important call-outs from that event are, number one, it was well attended by public and elected officials from the entire Mid Valley area. I mean, you're talking Canby, Donald, Kaiser, Woodburn, Gervais, and others. And ODOT was also in attendance. So Representative Mannix was there, and he spoke very highly of our own Senator Woods. And he also spoke about the support that he's receiving from Representative Neuron. And what's so important about this is they are discussing a bipartisan effort to fund what we believe is a very important study on the expansion of Wes, all the way into Kaiser, and bringing, solving some of the issues from a commuter standpoint with a commuter rail solution. So it was great to listen to. And we also had someone, I don't, his name leaves me right now, but a gentleman who represented the rail side of it too. So they talked about the feasibility of that and why it makes sense. So it was held in Woodburn. Very exciting. I also attended the Palindrom Open House, and that was actually supported by Palindrom. It was at the library, and it was a discussion about transit-oriented development that's upcoming. They were talking about, you know, actually, first I can see in two to three years. That would be really great, very aggressive if that happens. But it was attended by interested community members. Many of them were the potential future residents of the development. The entire session was in, had an interpreter, so it was presented both in Spanish and in English. They did a great walkthrough with some 3D views. They had large presentation blocks where they actually, you could actually go up and have conversations. And it was, it was really, it was really great to start to see this become real. And they will be holding another one in November, too. So I would encourage anyone who continues to have interest to at least attend. And they also had really great Mexican food that they catered. So you name it, they had it. Tamale tacos, rice, the whole thing. And then finally, I do want to call out, Mayor, thank you for the proclamation for American Indian Heritage Month. It's another step to bury our past and yet to look to our future. And as an, someone with an indigenous background, we remember, at least in my family, every day, that indigenous families and our descendants, many of us still bear the scars of the cycles of generational trauma that were inflicted on, for instance, my grandmother, from the massacres of our ancestors in the government boarding schools. And what's really great, though, is events like the proclamation and this being American Indian Heritage Month, the people, our indigenous younger generation are really working hard to create a really much better future. And they're recapturing the language of the tribes. You can go and learn how to speak Lakota, and they have classes that they're running all the time. And we're, the younger generations are really continuing to demonstrate that all of us as descendants of that generation before us are resilient. And really, you know, and you're talking about really coming into education, bringing our past forward and taking a look at how do we get beyond that and yet remember it? So I appreciate that. Thank you for the city making this proclamation, because I think it's very important. So thank you.
And Your Honor, I think there's one more thing that we need to remember. Since we aren't going to meet until December, we have a Christmas tree lighting, or a holiday tree lighting that's going to happen on the 30th of November, I believe.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. Do we have the actual date? It's on my calendar.
It's the 30th. Five to seven.
We have the...
It's important that the mayor knows that.
Well, it's on my calendar. I just agreed to be there, but I didn't have it in my notes. Thank you, Councilor Lindvile. So November 30th is the tree lighting at Town Center Park, and I know we have, we expect to see some really great singing groups from our schools. It's great to, it's a lot of fun, and again, thanks to our Parks Department. They are very busy. Thanks for bringing that up. That brings us to our consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the agenda?
Resolution Number 3088, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville approving a construction contract with Romtech Eek for the Boons Ferry restroom construction project. Resolution Number 3089, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville approving a construction contract with Buell Recreation LLC for the Boons Ferry playground project. Resolution Number 3090, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a master services agreement with Open Gov Inc. for asset management software services. Resolution Number 3092, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Century West Engineering for engineering consulting services for the 2024 street maintenance project. Capital Improvement Project Number 4014, 4118, 4725. Resolution Number 3093, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville accepting the jurisdictional surrender for a portion of Southwest Stafford Road and Southwest Frog Pond Lane by Clackamas County pursuant to Oregon Revised Statute 373.270, and minutes of the October 16, 2023 City Council meeting.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been read. Do I have a motion to approve it?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I'll second that.
The motion has been moved by Councilor Dunwell and seconded by Councilor Lindvill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. That brings us to new business, starting with Resolution Number 3081.
This is Resolution Number 3081, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville approving the City of Wilsonville Public Art Policy and Guidelines.
And we'll start with a staff report with Ms. Valentine.
Thank you for having me here. My name's Erica Valentine. I'm the city's Arts and Culture Program Coordinator. Here today have the Public Art Program Policy and Guidelines. You last reviewed it at your August work session and gave me feedback then, so this is that next step. So an overview, adoption of Resolution Number 3081 approves the proposed Public Art Program Policy and Guidelines as recommended to council by the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Commission, or ACHC. So a background of how we got to this place today with developing these policy and guidelines for public art. The city has the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Strategy. That is about 100-page strategy, and that work is really what guides the ACHC's scope and charge forward. So it was a 1920 council goal, and it provided findings and recommendations for cultivating a sustainable, long-term plan that supports community aspirations for a vibrant cultural scene in Wilsonville. So from that strategy, one of the recommendations was that the city form the Arts and Culture Commission and provide supporting staffing resource. Also within the strategy outlines recommendations of how the City of Wilsonville can really support arts, culture, and heritage. So one of the key findings is that public art is widely recognized as a significant cultural asset in Wilsonville. And a recommendation is to develop a long-term, sustainable public art plan. The ACHC has also recognized public art as one of their top priorities. I would say in the majority of their meetings, public art has been a focus or come up. So they were also excited to move this forward and to get to this step tonight. So why public art? This doesn't include everything, but is just sort of a snapshot as far as why cities more and more are interested in public art, as well as are investing in public art. So it can improve well-being, it enhances creativity, it can increase tourism, it is inclusive and benefits everyone. It gives a unique opportunity to engage with the community, it can create a sense of community, provides more opportunities to artists, builds civic engagement, makes cities more unique, and enriches the physical environment and can bring spaces to life. So why does the city need a policy and guidelines? Wilsonville already has a robust public art collection. They have, we have well over 20 pieces, so it's a little bit unique that we have so much public art in Wilsonville, but no policy kind of guiding that work or framework. So with the adoption of the policy and guidelines for public art, it legitimizes and establishes the public art program, provides that framework. It also highlights public process, and outlined in the policy and guidelines show that we're following best practices and public art standards. That's really critical for when we are to the part in the process of we're installing public art. Residents tend to get engaged at that point when they're really seeing the artwork go up, not as much when it's in, you know, on paper. So it's really important to be able to look back on all those steps of community engagement, as well as that we are utilizing the ACHC to be that review body and be representative of the community, as sort of the stewards of art in Wilsonville. So the policy touches on that, that community engagement piece, as well as speaks on that the ACHC will be the review, review body and consists of the majority of the panels. So when looking at artist's applications and looking at their design works, that's really going to funnel through the ACHC. So the process for the policy development was reviewing many other cities' public art guidelines and policies. I was able to connect with several public art professionals that reviewed our policy. It was distributed to the exec team for feedback. The ACHC has reviewed it three separate times, and our city's legal team also did a review to make sure that everything in the policy is correct with Oregon contracting laws and So just a brief timeline, so again, June and July, ACHC reviewed the policy and guidelines. In August, I brought that to city council for the work session. September, ACHC recommended the final approval and for it to get forwarded on to city council. And then this evening, adoption of Resolution Number 3081, the City of Wilsonville Public Art Program Policy and Guidelines. This is just a high-level kind of overview of what is within the policy, and this is also pretty standard for every city's public art policy and guidelines. So it goes over what our project goals are, it defines public art, so certain things, you know, like signage wouldn't be included in public art. It's specifically created by an artist. Touches on funding, management, and roles, so the roles of the ACHC versus staff. Goes over that panel process, how the panels will be reviewing, so evaluation criteria, best practices, so issuing an RFQ, so getting an artist's qualifications, not their proposals on that front end. That's because you don't want to have, you know, 20, 30 artists submitting design work, but we're not compensating those artists. So there's sort of a process in place. We're kind of doing it correctly. Approvals, purchasing, donations, artist agreements, maintenance, and deaccessioning. Deaccessioning is when you have a piece in your collection that you want to essentially get rid of, so whether it's a safety hazard or it no longer is appropriate for the community, there's a process for removing it from the collection. And I also think this kind of high-level overview speaks on that public art is, it is more complicated, I think, than it maybe comes across the first kind of look. So it's really nice to have this written down in the policy. So this was just the last bit that I wanted to point out. We discussed it a bit at the August work session, but just that component of the panels, so the group reviewing the artwork. So they may consist of the ACHC, a portion of the ACHC, and/or relevant stakeholders or experts. So an example of that, we'll be doing a mural at the skate park. So it was important to not just have the panel be the ACHC, but to bring in teens and skaters into that panel that are actually using the space. So that's just an example of that. And because the ACHC is newer as a commission and haven't gone through that public art process yet, we'll bring in, you know, different arts professionals that maybe have gone through that process a few times. So the panel, again, they're reviewing, they'd be selecting the artist and then the artist's final design. So it's kind of a two-step process typically. We will stay in accordance with city code, so if the cost of a proposed project exceeds $100,000, then the council would be approving the contract. So that's kind of the policy and guidelines in a nutshell. The draft from work session to tonight really didn't change very much. There was a couple just spelling grammar things, but in terms of content, from the work session to that last ACHC meeting, it was pretty much, it didn't change very much. Happy to take any questions or feedback. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. I think it's really important that we have a process for selecting art, and it sounds like you've, you have guided your team through a really well-thought-out process, so thank you.
Who else?
I do have a question. So one of the challenges that I see is for the ACHC to ensure that all public art has a life long enough to justify the investment. It is not vulnerable to vandalism. And if it is vandalized, that there's an assurance that it's fixable at a reasonable cost. This, I mean, we're in a, we're in a time when tagging and other things have become much more prevalent in a lot of communities, including ours. So this may mean that art needs to either be fenced off, somehow protected, or it's sectional, so that if one section is damaged, it's easy to remove, and that's considered as part of the acquisition process or the commissioning of it? Have there been conversations going on about that?
Yes. Typically with public art, you'll have your, you know, budget to pay the artist, and that's kind of what's advertised in the RFQ, but as staff internally, we'll set aside a certain amount of money that's specifically for maintenance, which would include vandalism. And I've met with the Public Works Team, and they've kind of been maintaining the collection, which is, you know, around 30 pieces up until this point. And it does seem that vandalism for public art specifically is lower than I think some think. Something that has to do with an artist having created the piece. I think that there's sometimes like respect that typically like murals don't get tagged, but there would be, there would be funds in place to remedy that if it does happen. The mural at the skate park will get, like, it's like a clear coat, coating, so that if it does get tagged, it's not, you know, it can be wiped off. And artists are, you know, really creative in their ways to minimize vandalism or theft as well, because it is, you know, their, their work. So they often have really, they're the ones that have sort of thought that out of how to, you know, make it work, whether that's the materials or the durability, and I know with the weather here, that's all kind of taken into account.
I just wanted to commend you and the committee. Please forward my thanks to the committee for really comprehen-
Please forward my thanks to the committee for a really comprehensive policy procedure. I think you've hit all of the areas that I would think would be of concern, and so they've really done a nice job. Thank you.
And we will have a chance for some brief additional discussion after we make the motion. Does anybody have any other questions? Okay. Hearing none. I'm ready to accept a motion on resolution 3081.
I move to adopt resolution number 3081.
I'll second.
Motion's been moved by Councilor Berry and seconded by Council President Opperwald. Is there any discussion?
Oh, sorry, go ahead. I appreciate some of the comments that have already been shared by fellow counselors this evening. I appreciate that our community has interest in this, so thank you to our community. I think it's really good that we have this more formalization of Wilsonville's public art program, and I kind of reflect when a number of council members were able to do a tour of some community building spaces, recreation facilities, this was a month or two, yeah, police ago. And there, I noticed that in being in some of the spaces. One of the spaces, particularly, I really appreciated some of the pieces that they had in place, and this was at the Hillsborough Community Center. I mean, it's a gorgeous facility, but they had some public art pieces in and around outside that space that really just brought a lot of energy and a sense of identity for the space, and it was, it just infused it into the building. And that was cool to see, and I'm excited and glad to have the structure that's going to serve our city and, you know, kind of bring some of that energy and infusion of people and place into Wilsonville as it grows into our future. So thank you for all of that work, and I look forward to see how this, how this all comes to be. Thanks.
Thank you. I agree with what everyone has said here, and I wanted to also thank you, Erica, Ms. Valentine, for her work. We're really lucky to have you in Wilsonville with a very strong background in public art and fine arts. And the committee, which is a new committee, has spent, this has been a big charge, and it's going to continue to be a big lift. If you remember the, what, two years of study almost in developing the strategy and going back even 20 years or more, that we have heard, you know, long before we were here, residents and citizens have brought this up and have wanted a way for the culture and the heritage and the arts to be represented. And in many ways, we want our heritage to be represented through art, and I've heard great comments that are so exciting about the work to be done as we move forward. Seeing art, being able to see and experience the artists who live in our community. So a couple of things that I think about also as this develops is our town center as, you know, that's a, it's on our website, that's where we see it. We can't drive through it, we can't get out of our cars or walk to it yet, but I envision a day when this, the work of the Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission will help us be able to see the historical cultures that have been in Wilsonville all the decades prior to us being here, and the cultures that are, and ethnic backgrounds that are developing and growing today in the future, to see them represented in public art. And that's performing arts, it's all the way through. So this has been a big period of development, and I thank you and the commission for all their work and the people. We also had dozens of people who participated in the strategy.
Right.
There's a lot leading up to this vote. So if there are no other comments, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. That brings us to resolution number 3083.
Resolution number 3083, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville adopting the Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission, ACHC, fiscal year 2023-24, five-year action plan and annual one-year implementation plan.
Okay. This is resolution number 3083, which is adopting the Arts, Culture and Heritage Commission's five-year action plan and annual implementation plan, annual one-year implementation plan. Some of the other city committees have a similar one-year, five-year plan. Since the ACHC is new, this is the first time, the first edition of the plan, so the first time that you are seeing it. So again, a little background on the ACHC, since they are a newer commission, so that strategy was adopted in November of 2020. Again, there was the recommendation to form the Arts and Culture Commission and provide supporting staffing resource. And then a 2123 council goal was to establish the Arts and Culture Board. The ACHC was formed in December of 2021, and they started meeting in April of 2022. And the city hired an arts and culture staff person, which is me, in November of 2022. So this is all fairly recent, so I'm essentially going to take you through what the ACHC has accomplished and since they've started, as well as that look to the next five years, though essentially their charge is really outlined in that strategy that the mayor was mentioning. I think it was the largest task force in city history that was involved with that. So definitely a lot of interest. The ACHC, they wanted specifically to develop a mission and vision. The strategy itself is, you know, well over 100 pages and is going to really take them through decades of their charge, so they wanted a mission to kind of hone in on really what they're doing. So it is to enhance the Wilsonville community by supporting, advocating, and advising on matters relating to advancing arts, culture, and heritage. We strongly believe residents' lives are enriched and enhanced through a thriving arts and culture environment. And then their vision, lives will be enriched and enhanced through a thriving arts and culture environment in Wilsonville. And then their vision is one that supports all creatives, fosters a sense of inclusivity for all cultures, has a vibrant cultural identity, celebrates local history and heritage, is recognized for accessible community cultural facilities, parks, and other spaces to host a variety of creative forms and activities, and has a robust public art program. So their past accomplishments, they, there was the recruitment to fill the nine voting positions. The ACHC met 11 times, which well exceeds their minimum to meet four times. They've elected a chair and vice chair. And then since they've started, they've done two joint meetings, so one with DEI, as well as one with the Westlin Art and Culture Commission. The purpose of the meeting with Westlin was to, really for the two groups to meet, but it's also a goal within the strategy to really collaborate more with the high school, because the high school does have such robust arts programs, and there's a little bit of a disconnect there. And so with the shared school district, they, the two groups met together. A large part that the ACHC oversees is the Community Cultural Events and Program Grant. This grant was formerly the Tourism Grant, so with the forming of the ACHC, that Tourism Grant kind of shifted over. So they retooled the grant language and updated those guidelines, so it's specific to community cultural events, but it's open to a lot of the same groups that were applying under the Tourism Grant. So the guidelines are very broad to give, you know, as many groups as possible to apply, but you do need to be a nonprofit for that specific grant. So they made fund recommendations to council on how to distribute those funds, and those four local nonprofits that received funding were Charbonneau Arts Association, the Wilsonville Public Library Foundation, Wilsonville Rotary Foundation, and the Oregon Old Time Fiddlers Association. So Charbonneau Arts were, received money to support their big festival. I know they give a lot of funds back to the school, so it was more to buy more supplies that support them being able to hang more student artwork, because it's such a large component. The Library Foundation was able to install their Story Walk, which was a really big success. And the Rotary Foundation used those funds to support their summer concert series. And then the Oregon Old Time Fiddlers Association have done several small events held at the community center, so they've done concerts as well as workshops for kids and teenagers. Another charge of the ACHC is again to support nonprofits. The work of the strategy was, it was kind of overlapping in that COVID time, so obviously a lot of our arts and culture nonprofits are, you know, barely hanging on. The ACHC recommended that we host a free strategic planning session for them. Several of our ACHC members are also involved with these same arts and culture nonprofits, which is helpful. So Bill Flood, who is the consultant that worked with the city for several years doing the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Strategy, was able to host this session, and we had four nonprofits attend, so the Wilsonville Historical Society, the Wilsonville Arts and Culture Council, the Library Foundation, and Wilsonville Coral Arts Society. Public art, as I mentioned in the last presentation, is a long charge of the ACHC, so they'll continue to assess and evaluate the existing collection. They were able to choose an artist for a new piece at Tivoli Park, so that is a picture, a picture of it, and they chose a Portland artist, Karen Reitcheck. So it's a small piece, but essentially the park's maintenance team had installed something there that didn't work out, and so we were able to, you know, choose an artist and get artwork in that place. So that was a really great collaboration. They've been working on the Public Art Program Policy and Guidelines that you also saw this evening, and they've also received public art donations. A Japanese-American artist, local to Oregon, he passed away earlier this year, so his family was interested in kind of offloading as many of his pieces as they could, so that they could remain visible. So we received two of those pieces and are being, they're being stored now, so the ACHC will be able to decide on locations, but I believe Lake Oswego got a couple, and then some are going to the Portland Japanese Garden. So it's exciting that we were able to kind of get those in place for free. An art gallery, we've partnered with Clackamas County Arts Alliance, which is a local nonprofit, and they run an artist exhibition program. So the gallery is right outside here in that hallway, if you haven't seen it. So that, those exhibits will rotate every three months. The commission was really excited about that, and several of the commission members have been participating artists in this program in years past, and it features many Wilsonville artists. So it is open to county artists, but there's going to be a lot of Wilsonville artists. So I was able to be a juror for the next, juror for the next year's applications, and I want to say there were maybe six or seven Wilsonville artists, which their gallery supervisor said was, you know, she thought it was maybe more, because now we have the gallery here. So that's really exciting. That's just a little snapshot of a nice article that was in the spokesman about the gallery, and the artist is Susan Shank, who is also involved in the Historical Society, so she was able to be, and a member of the ACHC, so she was able to be our first artist. So looking ahead to kind of the next five years, they'll continue to oversee that Community Cultural Events and Programs Grant. Public art again will be ongoing, but they will hopefully be completing both, you know, smaller-scale and larger-scale projects. They'll be continuing to look at funding structures, so that's come up several times in meetings, it's just every city is different how they manage their public art program. They will be implementing the Community Enhancement Program Fund, so we received funds in order to complete that skate park mural, so that will be coming. Nonprofit support and capacity building, that's ongoing. Increased arts classes and programs, that's ongoing. My position is house within the Parks and Recreation Department, so we've added a couple more arts classes, and I think that'll be an ongoing goal as well. They'll also look to expand or evaluate that gallery program, more collaboration with the library, school district, and other arts organizations, and develop culturally relevant programming that centers diversity and inclusivity. So that is sort of just the high-level, again, overview of everything that they're working on, and it's really, again, just, it's all taken from that, that strategy, which is really great that the city was able to invest in that strategy, get the Arts and Culture Heritage Commission going. And I know I've met with several artists in the community that have lived here and that they're not necessarily on the ACHC, but they all, you know, are just happy to see things kind of moving along in arts.
Well, thank you, Erica. And so what I'd like to do is start with some clarifying questions for Ms. Valentine, and then we will ask for a motion in a second and then have discussion. So does anyone have any questions? I think you've been very clear. Okay. Seeing no questions, may I have a motion for resolution number 3083?
Your honor, I move to adopt resolution number 3083.
Thank you, sir. Second.
I second the motion to adopt resolution number 3083.
The motion has been moved by Councilor Linville and seconded by Councilor Berry. Is there any discussion? Well, I do have something. I have had the opportunity to go to several of the meetings just as a liaison and really appreciate, again, as I commented earlier, some of the same comments I would, I would apply to this, is just I appreciate the, the work of the committee and what this first year in forming such a big thing has meant. It's been a huge undertaking. And when you realize it encompasses so many big aspects of, of culture, really, culture, arts, and heritage, that's no small thing. And so I really like the way that this five-year plan is laid out, because I think it recognizes that this first year is the formative year, and you've got the detail for the second year, pretty good detail on the second year with the plan, as it says in the materials to, I think it's page 294 in our packet, page six of this particular section, that the commission recognizes that adjustments are to be made to the longer age plan via annual course corrections. The five-year plan is outlined in fiscal years, and then each year, as this develops and they find more clear direction as you engage with the community, each year will be updated. So thank you. Any other comments? Well, seeing none, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to resolution number 3091.
Resolution number 3091, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville adopting the findings and recommendations of the Solid Waste Collection Rate Report, October 2023, and modifying the current Republic Services rate schedule for collection and disposal of solid waste, recyclables, organic materials, and other materials effective January 1, 2024.
And I will have our staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I'm Mark Ottenhead, Public and Government Affairs Director for the City of Wilsonville. And with us this evening... Where it disappeared. Got it. All right, take two. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Mark Ottenhead, Public and Government Affairs Director. And with us tonight is Chris Bell, CPA of Bell &amp; Associates. Resolution number 3091 pertains to adoption of the 2023 Solid Waste Collection Rate Report and modifying the current Republic Services rate schedule for the collection and disposal of solid waste, recyclables, organic materials, and other materials effective January 1, The rate review process and results is composed of three sections: an annual cost report with adjusted results for 2022, projected results for 2023, and a rate recommendation for 2024. Republic Services has three lines of business: roll cart, which is for residential customers, containers, which is for commercial businesses, and drop box, which is industrial businesses. The total of all three of these equals composite revenue for Republic Services. This table is, shows the adjusted 2022 Wilsonville results and demonstrating a composite rate of all three lines of business at 10%. And at this point, I'll pause for a moment to see if Chris Bell would like to make any comment.
No comments at this point.
All right. 2023 has projected primary expense increases. Principle was recycling processing. The cost increased was 27%. The cost for disposal of waste was nearly 9%. Other cost drivers include wages, health insurance, yard debris disposal costs, and general inflationary costs over the past year. Additionally, in 2024, Metro anticipates another increase in disposal estimated at 3.5% starting in July of 2024. The projected financial performance for Republic Services on their three lines of businesses is at 5.73%, so that's the projected rate of return. The solid waste franchise provides for an operating margin or rate of return in the range of 8% to 12% with a target of 10%. The projected 2023 results are below that rate of retard, rate of return target with a 5.7% margin, as we just saw. Rate increases are recommended at 5% minimum, and some rate services increase 8 to 12% based on the recommendation, and we'll go into a little more detail on that. Right now, the report is proposing a residential rate increase of 8.8% to 9.5%. There's three primary sizes of carts: 20, 35, and 65 gallons. And each of them has certain costs that are set. In other words, every customer receives the same service in terms of a trash cart, a recycling cart that for co-mingled recycling, a yard debris or organics recycling cart, and a glass cart. And so the differentiation between them is the volume of waste or garbage that has to be disposed of. Previously, the council had indicated a policy preference to reward residents who generate less garbage, less waste, with a lower costly service, and those that generate more would be paying more. This policy preference has maintained itself over the past, since 2019, when we adopted the modern solid waste ordinance. So the percentage increases vary by the size, with the smallest can having the smallest increase and the largest can the largest. The rates would increase by somewhere between $1.88 a month to $3.45 a month. Commercial rates would increase somewhere in the range of 6.7% to 8%, depending upon the size and the frequency of service. Industrial rate increases would range from 4.4% to 5.6% with an average haul increase of $7 per haul. There's also several special recycling services to point out. One is the new Recycle Plus program. This program will be an opt-in service for hard-to-recycle items like clamshells, old linens, items that are not collected as part of the regular recycling service, and also batteries, all kinds of batteries, principally alkaline. Basically, you'll be placing them in a, in plastic bags and a glass recycling bin, covering the terminal so as to not have the batteries discharge. Additionally, another special recycling program is the Metro Business Food Waste Program. And this essentially is a program that started during the great, during the pandemic, and then was paused for two years due to pandemic-related disruptions, but it impacts what's called the back-of-the-house food scraps, and, as opposed to the front, the public portion. All major Wilsonville businesses currently participate in this program, and as it proceeds over time, more and more businesses will be participating. Clackamas County Sustainability Staff and our City Economic Development Manager work with businesses to help with compliance for this program. That in a nutshell is the essence of the presentation, and happy to accept any questions at this point. Thank you.
Thank you for the distilling these many pages down to something reasonable. I, I have two questions. One, in the, in the rate, in the Republic Services rate schedule for collection and disposal, the numbers are a little bit different than in the report. Specifically, the residential, single-family dwelling, it, it says in the report that it's, there are 65-gallon bins, roll, roll carts, and in the rate, it says there's 60. Which, which is it?
65.
So this is incorrect. This rate, this new one that we got was incorrect.
Yes, so we will have to make a scribbler's correction on that.
Okay, all right. And then I just have a question about getting to the rate increases, and I understand the difference in the percentages as the size of the container increases or the yards in the commercial container increases. I, I understand the increase in the percentage there. What I don't understand is the, and maybe, maybe this was all part of Counselor Akravell's questions that I didn't understand, but why residential collection service increased eight point, at a base of 8.8% and commercial container service increased 6.7%? Why is that?
I will turn to our CPA for his response. I think I know the answer, though.
There's a whole host of reasons, but the biggest one is primarily that if you're a residential customer, you've got three trucks showing up at your, 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 your place of residency, and each one of those trucks and has a significant cost associated with the labor and everything else. There's that aspect of it. There is the increase in disposal fee, and the disposal fee has a, a higher impact on the residential rates than it does the commercial. And then the third and most important thing, in the City of Wilsonville, your commercial customers have been growing, and nothing keeps your rates low like growth. And so over the last few years, your commercial customer base has been expanding. So those are the primary reasons that, that there's a difference.
So how, how was the 8.8% increase arrived at?
You read, you read, you got the report in front of you?
Yes.
I'm going to walk through some of the, the numbers. The waste disposal, it was a combination, we'll, we'll look at the 8.8 on the 20-gallon. 47 cents is the expected increase in disposal for that level of service. Co-mingled recycling, everybody gets the same size of container and same cart and same collection frequency. An increase in the, in processing fee for recycling is 73 cents. That was split evenly amongst all the residential rate payers. And the collection increase is, and, and we had a little bit of a buy-down for the 20-gallon, per Mark's earlier explanation, as far as reducing the rate for lower waste generators. And so that collection increase, which is primarily a com, a combination of CPI, but more importantly, the increase for labor. And one of the significant increases this year that we're seeing in the entire metropolitan area is the increase in labor costs associated with new union contracts. So the combination of those three costs, plus the margin in franchise fee, the city earns, or, or, or assesses a franchise fee of 5%, and then a margin on those three increases is a 28 cents. So that some of those three, or those, those four items comprise a $1.88, which is 8.8% currently.
Okay, I, I guess what I'm, I, I see the numbers. I'm just wondering how they, how they were derived. So how did 47 cents for a waste disposal increase? Where did, where did those numbers come from?
Well, the waste disposal, and, and, and as many of you may know, is waste disposal within the Portland metropolitan area is controlled by Metro. It's when Metro increases the rates, the rates are passed back to the, to the residential rate payer. So that, that 47 cents is the increase in the collection, or excuse me, increase, increase in the disposal rate, and that is multiplied by the average set-out weight for that container. So the average set-out weight multiplied by the increase is the 47 cents.
Okay. So that answers your question. Um, I don't, I may not ever understand it. Well, you know, I, I asked that question...
I was going to say, on, on the waste disposal increase, it's basically when Metro increases those rates, they, the hauler has to pay them, and then they just pass those costs on to residents.
And I, and I, and I understand that for, I mean, that particular one, the other ones, I guess there are probably metrics that combined to create those numbers.
For each individual line item, there should be a justification as to the increase that should be explainable, I think, as explainable in the report. But if there's a specific line item that you're curious about, I'm sure Chris could, could go through that and explain it. Like, could you take on the co-mingled recycling one, the 73 cent increase in the 20-gallon one, Chris?
Yes.
That might be helpful.
Yeah, or, okay, let me pull this up here. Okay, so the, the 73 cents is, that is the difference in the, in, in the previous cost with the expected cost, and that amount is allocated amongst all of the residential rate payers, the same amount. Okay, so here's the, the difference in recycling. The, the expected increase for residential processing is $49,723. And so if you take that 40, that's just in the City of Wilsonville for the residential. So if you take the $49,000 increase for recycling and divide that by the 12 months, and then divide that by the customer count, the number of residential customers, it comes out to 73 cents.
And does that, the factors that contribute to the $49,000 figure include inflation?
It's, it's a combination of a lot of things. It's, there's, there, there's, there's a processing cost that when, when Republic Services takes that collected material to Pioneer Recycling. Pioneer Recycling has a, has an approximate cost to sort that material, just to sort it out, of about $120 to $130 a ton. That's just the, the cost of it. And then the cost of that processing is offset or reduced by the value of the material that's, that's processed. The problem over the last 18 to 24 months is, or actually the last 18 months, is that the value of that collected material you're recycling has been diminishing. It's slowly been coming up, but it's greatly diminished to a point where it's costing a significant amount to process that material. Earlier, and, and, and one of the questions was that the value of cardboard is the most significant and the most impactful material that's collected on the curbside, and when the value of that material almost went to zero back in the fall of '22, the cost of processing went to around $120 to $125 a ton. And so those costs are passed back to the rate payers in the form of, of increased rates. So the, the primary reason that we're seeing that, that increase in recycling processing costs is due to the soft market for the collected materials.
And you also commented on page eight, um, 20, it's page two in this report, about the great variability in the price, the value of plastic.
Yes.
And the market changes. And so it seems like manufacturers are not really wanting to use recycled cardboard or recycled plastic as much as they did during this period.
It's, there's, there's part of that, and then the other, the other problem that recyclable materials has, especially regarding plastic resin, is that the price of virgin resin is so much lower because the amount of resin that's being consumed has, has slowed down with the, with the downturn in the economy. So manufacturers are, are looking at lower-cost alternatives to try to alleviate some of their, their, their cost, their, their sensitivity to pricing.
Okay, so, oh, so I, go ahead. Go ahead. Okay, I noticed, I forgot to notice the numbers here. Counselor Dunwell. Counselor Akravell? Okay. Starting with Council President Akravell, and then Counselor Dunwell?
We'll all get a turn here. Okay, so I, I also had some questions about this, and I think I approached it a slightly different way. And I know, right now, we're, we're, we're looking at this resolution, resolution number 3091. I also then, when I had some questions about the increases, I looked at the ordinance because the ordinance is really kind of, it's like the structure, and the resolution is the product of, of that structure, right? So the ordinance lays out, how's it going to run? How's it going to go? And I noticed, so my questions originally were... And I noticed, so my questions originally were, in that ordinance, if we go to page, so, it's like page 341 of our packet, it's Article 8, Section 2D. Okay, so this is where it's explaining that if the expected operating margin is less than 8%, which I understand that's what we're looking at, right? That then, service rates will be adjusted to reflect 125% of the CPI. And so, then, I asked staff, what, okay, what's our CPI that we're playing with here then? You know, to try to get to this, how did we get to the 8.8%? Or how did we get to, for residential, actually, it's an average of 9.2 for residential, commercial 7.5. So I was trying to get, you know, figure out, how did we get to that percentage? So that's trying to get at the same number, but in a different method, right? And that's when I learned that, in this instance, we're actually not looking at 125% of CPI, because 125% of CPI would be less than that. What we are looking at is an extraordinary rate increase, which is covered in Section 3. So if you just go to the next page of that ordinance, so this is page 342. And I will say, so, the ordinance defines it, I was a little uncomfortable with this because I didn't feel like the resolution ever explicitly said that this was an extraordinary rate increase. And so, I mean, when I was doing my review, I didn't know that that's what we were looking at, and I think that's probably led to your questions too, right? The extraordinary rate increases, as it's defined here, it says, "In the event of an extraordinary or unanticipated event, including a change of law, change in disposal site, adjustment to the disposal rate by Metro," which I'm hearing has happened, "or a mandate from a government entity to provide a new type of service." So, if those things cause an increase greater than 2% in franchisee's annual cost for allowable expenses, and we drop below the 8% for the margin, then, the franchisee may submit a written request to the city manager or designee for an extraordinary rate increase. So that's what puts us into the extraordinary rate increase. So I'm wondering if staff, in just a minute here, because it's not really explicitly outlined in that resolution, if you could point out to us where we meet that criteria in the documentation? I would appreciate that. And then, I'm also, like, it's saying that that written request that's going to the city manager or designee, that it's going to include the calculation, supporting documentation, impact of the change, and that we, as council, are going to, the extraordinary rate increase will be approved by council through a resolution. So I'm wondering, is that what we're doing now?
It seems to me that if we are, we would be doing a separate resolution.
That was kind of my assumption too. So I'm hoping that we can just have it be a little bit more explicit and a little bit more clear, and then set what the expectations are. This is the first time, I think, that we've had an extraordinary rate increase. So, you know, I was a little unprepared for the process, maybe. So I'm appreciating this clarification, but I'm wondering, like, going forward, how is it a separate resolution? Is it a separate report? Who has visibility into that report? What does that look like? So those are some of my questions to kind of flush it out, if that makes sense.
And why would we not, I guess the other question is, if it is not an extraordinary rate increase, and it is just a rate increase that's being asked for, why wouldn't it follow our policy, in our ordinance?
Those are all fair questions.
So who wants to address that? Let's...
Well, I think one thing we can say is, we didn't actually get our rate review report until the day it was due. And we were having problems with the franchisee getting the financial data in a timely manner. So I had scheduled a draft presentation of this report for October, but the deadlines were not met by the franchisee to provide the financial information. And so, I didn't actually, I was clamoring about this thing. My boss can indicate. I kept him in the loop on all the problems we were having. But basically, it came in the day it was due, for my staff report to turn in. And I then had to scramble and get the rate sheet updated, which is not really my expertise, but, so basically, the thing was kind of rushed, is what it comes down to in part, honestly.
I think your questions are fair, and I think Republic Services should probably have to respond to the questions that council is asking in terms of what makes this extraordinary, and whether or not we met the language of the city council's adopted resolution.
And I would, I would also like to hear from our city attorney on the technicalities of this, when the extraordinary, what really defines the extraordinary increase?
And what the process would be.
Yeah, so, wouldn't it be a different, a separate resolution from the rate increase? It's in lieu of a rate of the 125% rate increase. So you'd only do one resolution, you wouldn't do two. What the language of the resolution says, you know, probably could be clearer than what's in the resolution now. And really, in looking at it, my understanding is, one of the biggest factors overall for all the rates that have caused the increase are the metro fees. I think we calculated it at over 3% of the overall increase in the, the overall operate, allowable expenses planned for 2023, over 3% of it is attributable to disposal costs. So, at that point, then, it does qualify for the extraordinary rate increase. But I agree that we can, Republic Services is here, representatives of Republic Services are here typically. And a matter that is not on a public hearing, we don't open it up for public comment, but that is at the discretion of the presiding officer. So if the mayor would like to open up the discussion for Republic Services to comment, that is within your right to do.
I've got two points to make before you guys griddle Jason. Two things, the percentage, the way the ordinance reads, there would have been a rate adjustment last year, and a year before, and a year before, if we followed this particular ordinance, because last year, they came in below 12%. There would have been a CPI adjustment. Prior year, they were a little bit above the 12%, so it wouldn't have been as much of a CPI adjustment, but there would have been adjustments. The last adjustment that was made was, I believe, like, 2019? So I think we're going into year five with no rate adjustments for the current collection system, which, if you average that over five years, it's about 2.5% increase. That's one thing. The other thing too, is, you know, since that time, since I first started working with the city, the metro disposal rate's gone from $99 to $142. It's increased by 43%.
In what period, please?
Five years.
From 2020 through what we're projecting for 2024, 43%. That's significant. To put that in comparison, Clackamas County has raised the rates every year to coincide with Metro, to keep pace with the increases for disposal and for labor. And over the same period of time, the rates have remained the same in Wilsonville. In fact, there was actually a rate adjustment down, I believe, in 2020. So there was a rate decrease. So during that period, disposal increase alone for a customer with a 35-gallon cart has been $2.39. And the increase that we're looking at right now for a 35-gallon cart is $2.60. So that means that there's been some, you know, for all intents purposes, Republic Services has done pretty well as far as managing costs associated with the contract. And keep in mind, you've had growth both in residential and commercial. But a lot of the costs that we're presenting right now are out of the control of the hauler. That being disposal, that being recycling, to some degree, they're, you know, they can't really control the cost or the labor market because that's a union contract. They don't pay their drivers, their drivers don't work for them, and they can't pay for the garbage. So those are the three big drivers for the rate increase that we're proposing tonight.
And if I may, also, because it's more relevant for our discussion during the public hearing, but one of the things that we are doing as part of the update to the ordinance is to better align our rate review process with what the county does and what we're currently doing, like, essentially the practicalities of the issues we've seen. I also think that, and Chris is right, there are times where Republic Services under our current franchise agreement could have demanded a rate increase. I think with the pressures of COVID and other things, that that has not happened. So, yeah, so I agree with Chris, and I really think that what we're trying to do with this sort of revamp of the franchise agreement and our administrative rules is to get back in line with what our regulations say, and do it the right way, and the way that we've all agreed would be most efficient, now that we've had these four years of operating under this new franchise agreement, and we've seen where the issues lie in the process right now.
Okay, Counselor Dunwell had her hand up.
Thank you, Council President O'Graville. I believe that you stated my concerns very eloquently. I think that overarching all of this, the fact that we are asking these questions when we are, I would say, backed into a corner because we are running out of time, it doesn't feel good. And for the citizens to know that we have what can be considered an extraordinary rate increase in front of us, again, I believe that we are being placed in a position that's very uncomfortable. And I see that there's a lot, there are so many questions that are not answered, that are caused by this delay. And I realize that we have to make a decision this evening. But I do want to go on the record that, for myself as a city councilor, I feel very uncomfortable that this, we have been placed in this position. And I would like to make sure that we do everything we can, whether it's within the franchise agreement or with anything else, particularly because we agreed at one of our prior council meetings that we would actually reduce the reporting, a number of reports that we would receive from Republic. Quite frankly, I feel like, at this point, the opposite should be true. And I'm also concerned because we actually agreed that you go from a, we move to a calendar year. How does that affect us in future years, and does that help solve some of those issues?
So we've been essentially operating under a calendar year despite what our, that's what I'm saying about we're rightsizing, is essentially the changes we're making about calendar year is what we've essentially been doing already. And so, we wouldn't see a change as far as a negative impact moving forward.
Okay, well, that being said, still, the lack of timing on delivering this to us, and I'm sure that, Mark, this created you great consternation because you knew that you were running out of time, so to speak. And I understand that there are some extenuating circumstances, but what I do want to call out is that I'm seeing in this supplement, this update report, that there are still changes that were made in the table. There are, are they, are we compensating for Scribner's errors, or is there a lack of confidence of these numbers that were being presented tonight?
I believe that most of the numbers in the rate sheet, the rate schedule, are accurate. I did have our CPA review them, and I had Republic Services review them. They did find one set of Scribner's errors. They didn't find the 60-gallon one, but they did find that condominiums were supposed to have the same rate as residential. So that was corrected here at the last moment. But originally, I had set out a schedule in May that everyone agreed to, because we'd gone through this before, and I didn't want to have it happen again, and of course, it happened again. But I tried to have it, said the draft report comes to you in October, so there are no surprises. So if there are questions, we can resolve those questions, and I have a month between the beginning of October to the beginning of November to resolve all those issues. And that draft report opportunity was missed because the franchisee could not produce the required data in a timely manner.
And I think as a general sense, that our citizens understand that rate increases will happen, and, but the circumstances under which this is happening do not appear comfortable to us, or at least myself, as a, I'll speak for myself, as a council member, because we are asking a lot of questions that should have been answered, or should have been posed quite some time ago.
Counselor Lindvill.
Yeah, I just turned the wrong one off. I don't, I don't want to have the questions misconstrued that, you know, that it's, that we're trying to be overly critical about this. And the, when I was asking the questions about the individual numbers, had there been some pretty clear transparency that says, "We're increasing these because of what Metro has done." But we've gotten in the report things about union contracts and other things that don't really fall under the extraordinary circumstances. So, I think it's just for me, it's, if it was transparent that we're increasing these because of this, and that's very clear, and not a whole lot of calculations about other things, I'd get it. I'd probably, it'd probably be easier for me to understand. And so, right now, I'm still struggling with where the numbers are. And I'm not, I guess I'm not disputing that Republic Services could have in other years. I think, I think it's a little bit in the ordinance, it says 10% to 12%, not 12%. And I think they've been within that 10%, at least in most of those years, and that's why we didn't. And even if they could have done that, and I appreciate that we didn't get a rate increase in maybe some years that what there could have been, and that we've done some other things. I know there were additional services that were provided by Republic Services in some years, and, you know, I mean, we've had a wonderful relationship with them, and I'm not, I don't want, you know, my confusion to be reflected in we're having a problem with Republic Services. That's not the case. It's an issue more of just being a resolution extraordinary, here's the reason why, and it's clear, and it's in accordance with our ordinance. And that's where I am struggling at this point. And if we follow where we go with the ordinance, and it results in an increase, and whatever that increase is, then I, you know, I'm okay with that too. So I don't know how we handle this at this point.
Counsel President O'Graville.
If I get another, another turn. I think, you know, I appreciate the comments from my fellow council members tonight. I think it comes down to, as a council, as city council members, you know, when we make these sorts of decisions to change the cost of something for our community members, we need to be able to have complete transparency for the public on why that happened. Because if we don't, I mean, we're eroding public trust pretty quickly, even if it seems like, oh, but it's, you know, really a small dollar amount, or whatever. Like, this fundamentally goes back to public trust. So I think that's why we're taking it so seriously this evening, because we want to have that good foundation for everyone here, everyone in the room, and all the community members that are not in the room tonight.
So, thank you. Given where we are tonight, and we do have, I will come back to say, we actually do have quite a lot of detail here.
do have quite a lot of detail here. And I'd like to nail down any figures that need to be corrected. Can, Mr. Ottenad, can you recap any corrections that need to be made, please, for the record?
Well, at this point, for sure on the rate sheet.
And could you just list out exactly which one that is?
That is Exhibit B to the resolution. We would modify 60-gallon to 65-gallon.
Is this, this Exhibit B?
It's on the rate sheet.
It's the document that was distributed to council. So one is a red line and one's the clean version of the update.
Yeah, one's a red line and one's a.
So they're the same document, one just shows the red line.
I'm just saying, I don't see that it says Exhibit B. Okay, so it's this document, and please go ahead.
So the, the size of the gallon would cart from 60 to 65. And then the question on the.
I'm sorry, Mark, I want to ask you to identify which line you're talking about there.
Oh, this would be if in your packet, page 316.
Oh, you're on page 316.
We have a separate one that's not.
Page two on the separate one.
Okay.
Where, and all the residential roll cart service rates where it says 60-gallon, that would be 65.
Well, that needs to change to 65.
Correct. I believe.
And we have 65, we need to correct it on the Charbonneau as well?
Yes, all of those.
Okay, and so with our.
Condominium.
Our city attorney will change this for our records or note the correction.
Yes.
I think, is it also on page four?
Correct. On additional recycling services, drop box and commercial, that would be 65. That's towards the bottom.
And in the middle, under multifamily?
Yes, on the middle right side of the chart. I believe that's, those are the.
So none of the actual prices on this Exhibit B need to change?
No, but we will note, should the council decide to move forward with this resolution tonight, that what, one of the things that you will want to do as part of that motion is reference that you're accepting the rate sheet as distributed to council this evening. That's got the three price changes on the condominium garbage cart, which is on page two of that document as well, as the change from 60 to 65 gallons throughout.
Okay, so is every, I just want to go through some of these things because I want to identify the clarity that we, any clarity that we still need tonight. And it seems like we covered this one. And if I could.
Just kind of offer this up for you to consider. I think the reason why we're wanting to get this done is so we can give as much notification on the impending rate increase. But just given the nature of the discussion and some of the questions and concerns I've heard council express, it might not hurt just to push this to the first meeting in December so we can have more discussion.
Yes, if we can do that.
I think we need to be true to the, to the language in the franchise that talks about a letter explaining the extraordinary nature of this increase. I think that needs to be vetted by me. Just, I think the way this came to you is unfortunate, and it's not how we like to do things. So I want to honor what I heard Councilor Akervall say, which is, we should be transparent about this. So my recommendation is that you just put this on hold tonight, that you not take action, that you allow us to go through this and get the information we need, talk with Mr. Bell, and outline this in a way that we can come back to you, make this presentation so that it's clear to everyone why we're asking for more than CPI. I think the community deserves that, and I think you as an elected body deserve that. That would be my recommendation.
Do I have a motion to?
Table it.
Table it to. Table this resolution?
I have a motion to table this resolution until the first meeting of December.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion's been moved by Councilor Berry and seconded by Councilor Dunwell to table this resolution until the first meeting of the city council in December. Is there any discussion? We've probably had enough.
I just would like to reiterate that I think that this will give an opportunity to clarify exactly what's before the city council for a vote and to build trust with our constituents.
Thank you, Councilor Berry. Seeing no other discussion, I will add that I want to thank our council members for their diligence in studying this extremely dense material and our staff member, Mr. Ottenad, for his efforts to get the material ahead of time. He went to all the best effort he could, and I have every confidence that we will have a very clear, concise new set of documents for preparation for our next meeting. Seeing no other discussion, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
That brings us to continue, to our public hearing on ordinance number 883.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 883, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville adopting a franchise agreement for solid waste management and collection within the city and repealing ordinance number 814.
Thank you. Now we'll have our staff report.
I think, Mayor, if you could read the instruction.
Oh, I've got to do that, sorry. Tonight, we will have a public hearing to consider on first reading ordinance number 883. The order of procedure for tonight's hearing is set out in detail in our city code. In brief, we will start with a staff report. Next, the public will be asked to provide testimony. I will ask everyone who signed up in advance to testify first in the order in which they signed up. Then I will ask if anyone present, present in council chambers would like to testify. And then I will ask anyone who is on the Zoom meeting who has not testified but would like to testify to do so. After each person testifies, councilors may pose questions to me to be addressed by the person who testified or to staff to clarify any information that was conveyed in the testimony. Once the city council has heard from everyone and the city council is satisfied, it has all the information it needs to render a decision, the public hearing will be closed. Council deliberates, and I will announce a result. We wish to hear from everyone who wants to testify. However, we request that you refrain from repeating testimony given by someone else. If you agree with what someone before you has said, please provide your testimony indicating that you concur with what has been previously said. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes. We will time the testimony and provide you with a visual warning when there is one minute remaining. The public hearing is now open. Please provide the staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Amanda Guile Hinman, City Attorney, am also here tonight with Assistant City Attorney Stephanie Davidson, and she will be running the bulk of the staff presentation.
Mayor and City Council, my name is Stephanie Davidson. I'm the Assistant City Attorney. We are here to talk to you about proposed updates to the solid waste franchise agreement and related administrative rules. I'll just give you a really quick overview of the project timeline. We started this project actually back in August, I believe. We took a holistic view of these documents, knowing that Metro had new requirements that applied to us, knowing that there was public demand for additional recycling services. So we took a holistic view of these documents together. We started this conversation with you in mid-September. We held two or three work sessions. We asked for feedback on certain points. We've incorporated that feedback into the drafts that you have before you today. Right now, we're having our first public hearing and hope to have the first and second readings of this ordinance. And the goal is to have these updated, or rather amended, franchise agreement and related administrative rules effective on January 1st concurrent with the new rate increases. There are a couple of reasons that these updates are necessary. I'll go over this in greater detail in a moment, but Metro has some new requirements that apply to us. So there, there is this mandate to update our code and the administrative rules. Those changes relate mostly to the food waste program and additional service to multifamily customers. And then there's the public desire for programs like the Recycle Plus program, which we talked to you about. And in the next couple of slides, I'll very quickly go over what we view as the more significant changes to these documents. There are additional changes we made to harmonize these documents with current practice and to, you know, tighten up the language, things like that, but we're going to focus on the more significant changes. For example, the first bullet point here, the food waste program is currently in the current franchise agreement, but based on recent Metro's phased-out rollout of this program, it's now going to be a mandatory program that's required under Metro's rules. It's not mandatory for everybody but for covered businesses, which is a defined term. As of today, I believe a covered business is a business that generates 500, 500 pounds a week of food waste, and that program will continue to roll out. The second bullet point here relates to minimum service requirements for multifamily customers. Currently, these minimum service requirements are not in our administrative rules, so this is a new facet of what we're proposing. The last two bullet points here are new on-call services. That first piece is the Recycle Plus program. It's not required, but any customer that wants to subscribe for this service can obtain it from Republic Services in exchange for an additional fee. And what this looks like is, as a customer, if I subscribed, I could have Republic Services collect things like textiles, plastic film, plastic clamshell containers that would go into the recycling stream. And the last bullet point here is not for recycling service, but this is a change to align the language with current practice. There's a new category for special waste, which my recollection is that the example that was given to us was telephone poles. So, you know, Republic Services can collect that for a fee. It's just not in connection with curbside service, and that term is broader and includes, includes things like industrial waste. But that's, that's what that change seeks to accomplish. And this piece relates to some of the conversation tonight. There are a few significant changes to the proposed changes to the franchise agreement. The first piece allows city council to decide or, you know, bless whether or not certain investments in experimental technology, things like electric vehicle technology, would count as allowable expenses, which really goes to, in a particular year, what is their operating margin and is there or is there not going to be a rate increase? But we implemented the language that allows city council to make that decision on an ad hoc basis. The second change here relates to Counselor Dunwell, what you were referring to, shifting from a fiscal year basis to a calendar year basis. There are a few reasons to do that. Like Amanda said earlier, this is the, the schedule that the county is on. Our rate increase process and our review of Republic Services data is actually very closely related to the county's process. So this, this change probably will bring more efficiency. It's also the, the schedule that we are currently operating on, so it's an effort to align what's in the franchise agreement with current practice. Did you want to add to that?
Um, no, I think that's.
Okay. And finally, you know, the changes around reporting are pretty significant, too. I do want to emphasize that our goal in recommending these changes was not to reduce their reporting requirements. So under the existing language that you have in front of you, you are still entitled to receive all of the data as you currently receive. We've just sort of changed the way and the timing of how it comes to you. So we're, I guess I should start by saying, currently, you, you receive two biannual reports a year, one in June and one in December. So you also receive the annual report around the same time. So any given December, under the existing franchise agreement, you receive a biannual report and an annual report around the same time. One of the things we wanted to do for greater efficiency was to take, was to eliminate the biannual report, but take the required data that comes to you through that report and put it into the annual report. So you're still receiving the same data, you're just receiving it in one report versus two. And the second major change we made here was to strip the financial data out of the annual report so that that report would focus on operational matters, and you would still receive the financial data, it would just come to you through the rate review process. So I hope that makes sense. We are eliminating two reports, but you are receiving the same amount of information.
Yeah, and I, I think this really goes to the discussion we've been having on the prior item of creating better transparency. So one of the things that's very interesting about the annual report is it's required 45 days, there's a 45-day window after the end of the calendar year for that report to be done. So that data is not, not in any way affiliated with the information you actually need to understand what their operations are and what their service rates are, what the service rates are and how they're tied to financial data when you're doing a rate review. So the way it's structured right now, that annual report currently, really doesn't make sense for your decision-making. And so that's really what these two, doing these two reports as separate reports but that come to you at the same time, it's a way for what staff believes is, and why we're recommending it, is that it's going to make for more informed decision-making when you're looking at a rate review. And so that's really our goal in, in really focusing this and getting, and like Stephanie said, this whole shift is really, when we did this, we did this initially looking at how Clackamas County does its rate review, but we made decisions that didn't align with how that rate review process was done, which has caused issues over these last several years. And by making these changes to our franchise agreement, it will make it so we can actually abide by not only the spirit of the franchise agreement, but what the terms actually are of the franchise agreement. And so I think both, I think these changes, both on the calendar year basis shifting and the reporting shifting, and then the overall rate review, where we've got the dates in that align so much better with how the county's process works out. And Chris Bell is the consultant for the county, so that's why there's really good synergy in keeping those processes aligned. I think this is going to make for a much better process in the years to come.
And for what it's worth, I believe the deadlines that we've updated in the franchise agreement are, provide for the financial data to come to the city and the annual report to come to the city around August 15th. The city would then verify any rate adjustments by October 15th. So I think these dates are closer to like what staff especially would like to see in terms of the timeline.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
On page 18 of 31, it is franchise, Article 9, franchisee responsibility. Why is item 2D blank?
That is a Scrivener's error. That's something that we can correct without council taking action.
Okay, so there's not something missing?
No.
And what is our recourse if we do not get these reports on time?
That's a great question, and Stephanie can illuminate a little bit more about the enforcement mechanism. But one of the issues that we have by the city essentially going out of cycle of what our franchise agreement currently says is we really don't have a good enforcement mechanism. We do have enforcement language, both in the franchise agreement and in our administrative rules, where we can hold Republic Services accountable if there's a default of any of the provisions. But as, as Mark said, when he set out this timeline that everybody agreed to, that timeline is not in our franchise agreement. And so holding Republic Services accountable under our terms of our franchise agreement, it needs to be in the franchise agreement. And so that's why these dates are very important and why we made sure multiple times with both Republic Services and city staff that these dates better align with what the rate review process will look like, and then we will have the enforcement provisions in the franchise agreement if for some reason they're not being met. So I'll direct you to the city enforcement. So it's Article 12, it's page 25 of 31. So it talks about city, city enforcement. It's section 3 under there. So it's the council packet 351, page 25 of 31 of the ordinance. And that, so it talks about generally that we can use Chapter 1 of our municipal code for any enforcement. And then there's also separately, Republic Services also has a dispute resolution process. Republic Services and the city under Article 13, Section 2, about if there's a dispute. So let's say, for example, we take an enforcement action or we're about to take an enforcement action and Republic Services disputes that. take an enforcement action and Republic Services disputes that, there is a process also for a resolution to occur outside of the enforcement. But basically, we have the right under Chapter 1, which basically is a fine that we can assess if you violate the, if Republic Services were to violate the franchise agreement. And that's also true of our customers as well. So, if there's a customer who's violating our franchise agreement, similarly, we can utilize Chapter 1 of our municipal code for enforcement. And that's what, Chapter 1 is generally what we use for all code enforcement, the vast majority of code enforcement.
Okay. What would it be, what is the nature of the fine to...
Currently...
Is it enough to motivate compliance to the schedule?
Yeah, currently, most, currently violations are up to $500 per offense per day. So, let's say something's due on August 15th. For every day that we don't receive it, it's a $500 fine.
Is it the same as our claim? Is it any violation in the ordinance?
Yes, and we have had a discussion about updating our Chapter 1, and that is a project that we've got on the horizon. But as of right now, it's up to $500 per violation per day.
And I think one of the other things that we should probably discuss is that if we don't get that data, there's no rate increase, right?
Right.
So, that's the big one.
That would be the biggest way to, and then, and then I think we should look at making sure that we don't have a retroactive rate increase, right? If we later get the information, because we can't go around in this cycle that goes like this and...
That would be council's discretion to say whether you want to do that if information that was requested was not provided.
Do we need to have that in the...
I was going to say, there's no, there's no requirement for council to do that. So, if you were to do that, it'd be something outside of the franchise agreement.
So, right now, that's not, we would have to agree to that.
Right, and it would likely be something that was beyond their control that they couldn't for whatever reason. You would have the discretion to do so if you chose. And just a reminder that if this goes past 10, you have to vote to extend the meeting.
That's two minutes from now.
So, I was going to say, because that is a process motion you can do in the midst of another council action, so I was going to ask if you want to go ahead and do that motion now before we move on.
May I have a motion to extend the meeting past 10 o'clock?
You have to, how much longer do you think?
May I have a motion to extend the meeting?
Not to exceed...
Not to ex...
10:30?
Yeah. I'll move to extend our meeting tonight until 10:30 or earlier.
I'll second that.
I'm not going to ask for discussion.
No, we...
Less than a minute.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0.
Okay, so I will cover the process question, which I think is our last slide, maybe?
Yeah.
So, tonight, one of the things that we've talked with you all about is that we're not planning to have the second meeting in November. For this ordinance to be effective by January 1, it means that we need to do both readings tonight. Under our charter, we are allowed to do that. What that requires is that we have all the council here, so that threshold is met. Then, the second thing is that on first reading, it needs to be a unanimous vote of authorization on the first reading, and then, assuming that happens, we'll go immediately into the second reading following the closure of the first meeting vote. So, otherwise, if that doesn't happen, then what we would be doing is looking at a second reading at a later meeting, and then, thus, we would need to extend the date for when the implementation would occur for the ordinance.
Can I get a, ask a clarifying question? I just want to clarify, let's see, we are still in the staff report, yes, clarifying questions. So, do we have a first, on first reading vote?
Yep.
And we vote on that. Then, do we immediately then have a motion for a approval on a second reading?
So...
Or do we have a separate hearing?
It's not a separate hearing, but the mayor will do her second reading script. So, I'll reread the title, you know, this is the second reading of, so on and so forth, and the mayor will read her script. So, for the process purposes, it's basically the exact same scripts that we would be doing over two meetings. We're just doing it over one.
Does any counselor have any other questions of staff? Counsel President Ockerval?
I do. I think this is an easy one, though. When I was flipping back and forth between the resolution and the ordinance, I did notice in Article 8, 2D, when it is referring to the extraordinary rate increase, because I kept reading that part, this is not substantive. It's just a reference detail. It says that this information is provided in Section 5. I think it's Section 3. Is that just a Scrivener's error?
That's just a Scrivener's error. We can make that, we can make that change.
So, we don't need to call that out?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
And I should clarify, just for the public who may be listening, a Scrivener's error is essentially something like a typo that we, as staff, have the authority to correct, and that is, that's allowed under our code.
Any other questions? For public testimony, we will start with the people who... Do we have anyone trying to do public testimony?
I'm not sure if Republic Services wants to testify, but they are here, so...
I will read that. For public testimony, we will start with the people who signed up in advance to testify. We have no one signed up in advance. Would, I would like to ask if Republic Services would like to testify. They say no. Okay. Bear with me. I'm going to ask you another question. Does any counselor need anything clarified regarding... Nope, I don't need to ask that. Sorry about that. We have no one willing to testify.
I think you, at this point, can close the public hearing.
We're done with that. Okay. I am going to ask if the staff has anything further to add to the record at this time.
No, Mayor.
And seeing that there are no further questions, I hereby declare this hearing closed at 10:03 PM. That's the end of that. Okay.
So, you'll need to do the motion.
Oh, I did it. I called order Wilsonville...
No, you need to do the...
Motion and a second discussion on first reading.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry. And I shouldn't have closed it.
No, you do close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. Sorry. May I have a motion on ordinance number 883?
Your Honor, I move to adopt ordinance 883 on first reading.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Counselor Linville moved to adopt ordinance number 883 on first reading, and Counselor Berry seconded it. Is there any discussion? Hearing no further discussion or commentary, I will call for a vote on the motion. Those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? The motion passes on first reading 5 to 0. And I'm now going to call, even though you said we're not having a second hearing.
No, but I will read the title.
I would like you to read the title, please.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 883, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville adopting a franchise agreement for solid waste management and collection within the city and repealing ordinance number 814.
Does any member of council have any questions for staff or the city attorney on ordinance number 883? Hearing no further questions, do I have a motion on ordinance number 883 on second reading?
Your Honor, I move to adopt ordinance 883 on second reading.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Counselor Linville moved and Counselor, Counsel President Ockerval seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing no further discussion or commentary, I hereby ask the city recorder to make a roll call vote. Those in favor of the adoption of the ordinance will, as their names are called, answer aye. Those opposed will answer no, and those who wish to abstain from the vote will answer abstain. The city recorder will now call the roll.
Counselor Berry?
Aye.
Counselor Linville?
Aye.
Counsel President Ockerval?
Aye.
Counselor Dunwell?
Aye.
Mayor Fitzgerald?
Aye. The motion passes 5 to 0. Do we have any city managers' business?
Just one item, Mayor. You had asked, I work with staff, to put together some training for the Kitakata trip. That is in process. City Attorney will be involved in that. We'll be going over logistics, cultural issues, so we're going to do that under a training format, and we'll give you more information. We're looking at the first or second week of January.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Well, I do want to ask you a question about that.
Sure.
Just the terminology. You're, we're looking at, I'm interested in looking, reviewing and studying protocols?
Yes.
And that would be for the council?
Yes.
And also for all the staff?
Yes, all that.
Thank you.
As well as other things. But yes, primarily that. We'll go over the details of the logistics, the events, the expectations.
And I would like to include in that a chance for the council to, I want us to be able to identify elements of that training that we want.
Please, yes.
So, could the council, you know, if you have ideas of things that you want us to do, the type of discussion that you want to have, could you let me know, please?
Ideas, questions, suggestions are welcome. You can send them directly to Amanda.
Okay.
We would very much like to meet your expectations, so...
And I'd like to see that before we start.
We'll make sure that you have all that information.
We just want to kind of see the scope of what we're doing so that we, when we do it, we all have enough.
Got it.
Okay. And there will also be members of the Kitakata Sister City Committee going on the...
Correct. Our training will be specifically for council.
Mm-hmm.
And staff that are attending.
Okay. Is there any legal business?
Yes, one item, Mayor. Thank you. And it's really not legal business, and it's more personal, but it is tied to Wilsonville, so I do want to take a moment to talk about it. I think the council all generally knows that I'm a running coach with a running program at Coffee Creek Correctional Facility. Sunday was one of our 5K days as part of the completion of one of our programs. We had 38 participants, adults in custody, who completed it. And it's a really awesome opportunity for people to engage in something that is a good life skill to have, especially once they exit. And so, I just want to read a couple of the things when we get feedback from people that participated. We ask, "How has running changed you?" It has made me more ambitious and determined to complete something. Showed me that once I set my mind to something, I accomplish it. I've been exercising every day since this program started, and I feel great. I walked, but I, but I was, it was wonderful to complete this race, learning my capabilities despite my past addiction. And so, I just think it's, you know, I think sometimes we forget about Coffee Creek being part of our community and the adults in custody there being part of our community, but it was a really fulfilling experience, and just wanted to share with you a little bit about the 38 participants.
Thank you. That's really wonderful. Yes, I feel like clapping.
Yay.
Wonderful. Meeting is adjourned at 10:10 PM.